It's from, uh...
Yeah.
All right, I'm going to call to order the regular Board of Education meeting on July 8th, 2020, seven o'clock at Hubble Municipal. This is such as his call role.
Mrs. Sooten?
Here.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Here.
Mrs. Erickson?
Here.
Mr. Hamlin?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Matheson?
Here.
Okay, first you have a question.
Pardon me, please. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Uh, happy to be back in person and not through Zoom. Uh, we have a important meeting tonight, big agenda. We're going to review the budget, uh, talk about our reopening plans for schools, also review our equity and proactive practices work plan for the year. And we have carefully considered how we would make this meeting available to as many people as possible. Uh, this meeting is being streamed through the district's YouTube channel. So I'll remind board members that we are live on YouTube right now. Let's start over. Um, so I remind board members that we are live on YouTube. Uh, we're taking this approach for this meeting because of the unique circumstances we are in and because of the reopening plans for schools on our agenda tonight. For this meeting, we have also adjusted our public comment procedures and will reiterate those procedures in a moment. We've received several emails over the last few days and will only be reading or summarizing the ones that were clearly known accordingly. If your email is not being read tonight, please know that all board members have received your email and most likely already read it. First, on the agenda, any modifications to the agenda that anybody would like made? Okay. So, for those procedures for public comment for tonight's meeting, due to the ongoing pandemic and anticipated strong interest in reopening plans for schools, we are temporarily amending our public comment procedures for this July 8th, 2020 meeting, only and liable in-person and email comments. As in the past, members of the public attending in person will have the opportunity to provide public comments in accordance with Board Policy 2.230. Our practices for public comments at the beginning of the meeting will resume for agenda items with another opportunity later in the agenda for public comments on non-agenda items. Community members who are not able to attend this meeting in person and may wish to provide public comment or asked to send an email to boardofeducation@cusd200.org between the time that Board PAC was released on Thursday and 5:00 p.m. today, Wednesday, July 8th. Emails were asked to include in the subject line that email was intended for public comment at the July 8th, 2020 Board of Education meeting. Members of the public attending in person will have the opportunity to provide comments in person and any remaining time will be allocated to comments provided by email. These emails will be read in full or summarized as time allows during public comment portion of the agenda in the order which they will receive. The delineation between agenda and non-agenda items will apply until by 12:00 to any comments provided via email. We do have several emails we receive. They're applying to non-agenda items. As for public comments, please be aware that it's board's regular practice to not directly discuss or ask questions or take action on public comments until time has been taken together out of good information. If a board is here to listen, lack of action or a direct response following public comments does not apply any liability interest in what's being shared. Per Board policy, we've allocated 30 minutes for public comments and comments on any one subject immediately limited to 20 minutes. Board, make sure of the time allocation for each person at less than three minutes to allow the maximum number of people the opportunity to see. I know that we have two people signed up tonight, um, so I just ask because we got several comments we want to read, uh, if you're going to make your comments, we're going to only fight the three minutes. Um, our Board Vice President, Ms. Crabtree, will be timing comments and will raise her hand as we approach the allocated time, at which point we ask you to wrap up your public comments. In addition, to preserve confidentiality, the Board and its president reserve the right to request that items related to either personnel or students be provided to the Board privately or in writing for consideration in a future closed session if necessary. The Board must protect the civility of the form of the meeting. Please be respectful of the duties of the Board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process of your public comment. Please include your name and whether you are a resident of the district in your statement. Please let me your comments to a length that could be read in three minutes. Please be factual and courteous and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or are considered to be a member of the Board or state. Thank you for your understanding of the need for this temporary procedure for the July 8th, 2020 meeting and for your interest in providing feedback to the Board. First, we have two in-person comments and then we'll get to the ones we've received by email. First is Crystal Bankers.
Hi, Rick. Can you hear me? Good, great. I want to speak today specifically for policy regarding COVID-19 affecting children's early childhood in elementary schools. I am a mother of children in elementary school. I am a smiling face and a local volunteer at the class partners at Sandberg Elementary. Besides being a local mother, I have practiced and studied over field medicine for over 20 years. I have a career history as a pediatric visual therapist and a doctor of degree. This advanced model of education has provided me the ability to read and interpret medical research studies. I want to express my concern with the wide range of conformity of the ISPE guidelines for school this fall set forth for all children ages three to 18. I am quite concerned with the one-size-fits-all approach. ISPE is not recognizing that there are significant developmental, social, and educational mechanisms that change from ages three to 18. The studies done on children during COVID-19 are showing that the number of children becoming ill is growing and the majority of illness to children is coming from adults. There is significant fiber transmission being recorded from child to child or child to adult. This is based off the recent European cohort study presented in the Lancet dated June 25th. In addition, the American Academy of Pediatrics has also reviewed these observations. I recognize more research, clinical observations, and findings needed, but based on these studies, I am trusting my concerns with the extreme measures ISPE is guided in terms of social distancing, mask use, and inappropriate social isolation being used in an elementary classroom. These guidelines go against every childhood that's practiced research for the needs of early social learning and engagement of young children. In regards to mask use, I recognize that the use of masks in adults has become a contentious debate. One thing that I miss in from this discussion is that there is no safety data for children anywhere. Masks that are supposed to be for adults should not be translated to be the same for elementary children. Young children are not small adults. Young children do not have the same body awareness as adults. They may not be able to communicate with us when they are feeling lightheaded, having trouble breathing, concentrating, or communicating their needs. Will a school be held by them if masks be a part of the schools? What about ISPE's recommendations of using masks in gym class? I'd like to see any safety research on that. I will not be sending my children to school if this conforming formal model is applied. This is, I am concerned about this one-size-fits-all approach to our children. I'm asking these board members, is there a way to balance the much needed early elementary school social learning with good health sense hygiene and health?
Okay, thank you. Uh, next, in person, is Harold Lomps.
Good evening. Very different times tonight. Uh, my name is Harold Lomps. I live in the area of Fish Ridge. I do have students here, Bill, and I do have students over in the north. Uh, regarding school opening, I just made a couple of comments. I basically work in the healthcare industry and I can just tell you over the last month or so, it's been very interesting to the fact that the, it kept changing day by day. And the way the governors and executive boards work, it was creating such a burden and you couldn't make any kind of plans. As soon as you made plans, they constantly were changing. So I'm just going to warn you, it's probably going to happen also in the education process come the, come August because they've got to keep on changing the line and they're going to be doing them to the last hour. So, no matter what your plans are today, they're going to be changing tomorrow or the next day. So I do believe that you should be back to school learning. I think you're going to have an issue, an issue with, uh, you know, social distancing and masks and so on. I just passed a playground, they're playing baseball and there was crowds there and kids playing. So I think it's going to be a little rough for, for compliance. Uh, now moving on, uh, I just got a co-comment too. Uh, I did bring up the final ISPE. The district did pay out some stipends for spring sports and I just did a quick calculation. I estimated it was a couple hundred thousand dollars made out of stipends for the spring sports, uh, the high schools and probably the middle schools. And I know winter season is just finishing and the spring season hasn't quite started because I have kids in sports. So I was quite aware of the situation and I don't believe the district should be paying that money out because they're going to be needing those funds later on to deal with PPE and all the other items that's going to be coming forward. I also noticed today in the personnel report that looked like all the administrators got, uh, got me being approved for a 2.1% increase in salaries. Now, I, I just don't understand how the Board can approve a salary increase in these economic times with a number of people being unemployed or underemployed and other people getting pay cuts while getting their wages paid. And even, even the large companies that have a problem, even my wife was for a loan for a couple of days because of what was going on. So there's, there was almost nobody in private industry that was exempt from any kind of, uh, you know, financial pains or hardships that went on during this time. So I would, I would try to, I would try to reconsider and, and keep the salaries as, as a zero percent increase. I would not suggest any way of a reduction at this time since I do know they've been working over this time because I was dealing with some, some dependents and so on at the high school. So I know they were available and working. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lomps. Okay, now we'll move to, um, a series of emails through, see that if there was around 10 related to agenda items. If you're a doctor, you'll have your rotate back and forth.
The first public comment came from Heather Corilla. And her comment said, "I have three children in District 200, Hawthorne, Franklin, Eastmore High School. Please make masks optional to social and emotional damage to our kids because of these distancing measures that are safe. These restrictions are excessive and unnecessary for the health and safety of our children."
Second email came from Sarah Miller. "I know how much my nieces and nephews, my nieces and nephew are looking forward to resuming their first classes this fall. Thank you for reopening the school. It came late to have close personal interactions with the present teachers, field trips, and recess in June class, and all the wonderful activities that make education such a vital and valuable part of their lives. Please make the mask requirement optional. Please reconsider new rational distancing measures that are detrimental to children's development and success."
Our public comments were, thank you, Andy. "I'm writing as a concerned parent of an incoming District 200 graduate student and mother of three who has witnessed both first and second hand of the COVID-19 pandemic has impacted families within and outside of our communities. I'm writing to implore the Board to everything within its power to maximize the time students spend physically in school during the 2021 school year. I applaud the efforts of the district, the administration, the teachers, and staff in transition with essentially no warning, a preparation for remote learning this past March, but going forward, remote learning is unsustainable and will have negative impacts on our children, families, and communities. Children need to be present with their peers and their teachers. This is equally as important for the social and emotional development of their educational growth. My husband and I both have full-time jobs without the option to center some of the school full-time as well. He will suffer, we will suffer, his siblings will suffer, and his stress and anxiety will take them to homes. I understand that safety is paramount, but the American Academy of Pediatrics supports physical attendance in the upcoming school year with appropriate safety measures such as masking and social distancing. I understand also that the school year will look and feel much different than years past, and our students will miss out on many things like field trips, sports, and assemblies. Nonetheless, I implore the Board to put in place a reopening plan to maximize this full-time physical attendance in our school. Thank you, but also forward to us, uh, an email from a friend I think in Apple Park School District and that much of the same information."
And the next email was from Sara O'Leary. "I wholeheartedly disagree with having kids wear masks to school and eliminate minor essential state of mind. Choices and options must be available to avoid discrimination against people and their children who stand on either side of the argument. Non-intrusive, non-discriminatory measures like hand washing must be available at school. It is imperative to have children do this frequently when needed. Simple steps like hand washing can help diminish infections in school population. Universal, universal mask wearing of the population is not based on science and it is actually a dangerous idea based on only anecdotal observations, not facts. OSHA and A S C M agree that cloth and surgical masks are not intended to be used to avoid the spread of SARS-CoV-2 or new virus. It is highly realistic expectation to put on our children, the teachers, and all the school staff during the year of wearing a mask in the course of any other event for a length of the school day. The amount of time for actual course disruption will be affected. In the event that a family or school staff feels concerned about making the virus at school, attainable choices must be available like remote learning and wearing masks for the season and the fall. Families who are not concerned about SARS-CoV-2 transmission in school say it must be allowed when returned to school freely without, and it's only with approved hand washing gadgets and sanitizing diagrams. Wearing a mask must remain a choice recommendation that is rule-oriented. There is no reason for the school district to endanger the access to education of any child. It is their right and duty for us."
Next comment is from Rachel from Long. "Good evening and thank you for your time. I know there are not any perfect solutions for the 2020-21 school year. However, I know that e-learning is not successful for more than an hour per day of instruction in our household. And then the attention span of my middle schoolers on a Zoom or similar call is about 15 to 20 minutes before it's done again. I can tell you from experience using webcam technology from my research job of many years that an adult can only remain focused for about 45 minutes of a webcam-based call and that is an engaged back-and-forth discussion. E-learning is not an effective way for children to learn new material. It is disruptive to family schedules, preparing their work schedules, and creates an even larger learning gap than most of our adverse kids. I could go on and on about the social and emotional and economic impacts that a classroom time would have, but I figure I will lose. In an ideal scenario, children would go to school full day, possibly with slightly shorter classes and instructional time if necessary to accommodate longer passing periods in outdoor spaces, with short briefing breaks without masks when they're assembling. Yes, it's been cold or wet weather. Back lunches in the classroom and work are all grid levels. There is no need for lockers for lower high school backpacks with individual devices, pens, a multi-subordinate notebook, lunch, water bottle, hoodie, mask, tissues, and sanitizers all that is needed. Workbooks, books, etc. should all be online at this point and distributed only as needed. Elementary school kids can do personal items at their desks, but again, buses will partner with an established homeschool program for those that are not comfortable coming back to their classroom works and takes the pressure off of teachers and the district. Buses should only be made available to families that have no other consistent options. Encourage those that don't need it to promote for one year and allow more space for those to use. Worst case, full schools every day, which isn't an option to USD 200. Please consider renovating District 41 for everyday instruction, half-day classes, and other half e-learning. I think this would be the best way to keep kids engaged every day on a consistent schedule and a limited e-learning time. No matter what you do, it's an issue for working parents. This scenario allows you to provide food each day, additional oversight support devices for our kids, a Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday schedule with motherful day e-learning as to their rest when this engagement loss is scheduled, etc."
And the next email was received from Patrick Boyd. "As background, we have four children in District 200 in their 2020-2021 academic year, two fully seniors at South, and two will be at Edison in sixth and eighth grade. With respect, at the end of the 2019-20 school year, the teachers of CUSD 200 did a marvellous job during e-learning under the circumstances they were given. They provided the best learning environment they could and I take my hat to their records. I worked from home during the end of last school year and had first-hand knowledge of the e-learning process for the grade school and the high school. Unfortunately, e-learning, especially at the younger ages, provides no value. It is comparable to trying to teach someone to rebuild a car transmission over the phone while the person who are trying to teach does not make a transmission of the problem. E-learning is significantly less effective educational process than the learning that occurs in a classroom. This applies to both the level of effort that kids put into school and the value they get out of it. For the 2020-2021 school year, I fully support having children in school full-time. If kids have their masks on the bus during passing periods and they have social distancing during lunch, that is fine. I also fully support all extracurricular activities preceding next year."
Uh, next public comment is from Angela Stevenson. "We applaud your efforts to manage our students during this time of fear and so on. There are some things we need that we do know about education. One, District 200 children are already behind the curve of learning from the lack of quality education during the spring semester of online learning in 2020. Two, children of all ages do not learn in an online environment as effectively as they do in a classroom setting. Retention for some students is deplorable and parents who work may not be able to be at home to assist their children. Three, District 200's quality of education will continue to subvert the e-learning or higher-level learning in this mandate for all students. One example of compromised education because of e-learning classes this spring are subject to negative traditional quality of face-to-face instruction and recalcitrance, lest he didn't learn the material the way he has in all of his other excellent junior classes. One example of compromised education because of, oops, I'm sorry, I forgot that one. Five, the parents or students have mental health issues or concerns about attending school in person. Those students may opt out of in-person education induced through learning curriculum, and any learning curriculum should not be forced on all students. Why have set up a higher educational system when the likelihood of dying from COVID is lower than the likelihood of being struck by lightning or the likelihood of dying in a car accident on the way to school at this point? Let's move forward with facts that will clear how the COVID-19 deaths are trending. One, COVID deaths in our nation, state, county, and city have plummeted to extremely low numbers. There are no spikes or second waves indicated in the data. Two, in Page County, there has been one COVID-related death since 6/28/20 through 7/7/20 at 11:00 a.m. Three, underlying health conditions, co-morbidities, had advanced age over 65 are the most consistent factors of death in COVID cases for the website, that's Page County website. Four, ICU visits are very low, and again, the vast majority of those patients are over 65 years old. That would not be teaching or attending at District 800. Five, the most effective school day changes need to be based on data. Number one, students should wash their hands more often or thoroughly, and two, wear masks. Please allow students to attend all day in school, uh, in-person school classes and other sports, various activities going forward. If some parents or students have concerns, they may self-select to use various online options, but please don't force the entire school district to use a hybrid approach that will have a lasting negative impact."
Next one is from Ruth Miller. "Thank you for reopening schools, guys. My grandkids are looking forward to spending time in the classroom with their friends and teachers. Please make masks optional with reason. The reason masks are a divisive issue is because they are harmful to our children, physically, emotionally, and psychologically. Since a major part of communication is facial expression, masks also impede social interaction and communication. They create a barrier between teachers and students. These factors negatively affect what happens in the classroom. We want what's best for our kids. I'm concerned about the negative impact of isolating, masking, and restricting interaction. These are punishments used for prisoners and criminals who are not..." These are punishments used for prisoners and criminals who are not, and are not our schoolchildren. That's it. So I got one more. Uh, this was the last one we received for agenda items from Lynn Cato. Um, my name is Lynn Cato. I'm the mother of two C U S D two hundred students, all attending the Royal Mill School this past year, six in eighth grade. First, I send my appreciation to our district's administrators and teachers, who successfully created the spring's e-learning curriculum in such a very short time. Even though many classes did not complete its full syllabus, we were pleased with the amount of new content produced. It was a good outcome during a time of greater uncertainty. I am primarily ready to share distinct observations made during the spring's e-learning experience in hopes it will assist planning for this fall's reorganization. Depending on the subject matter, my kids' academic coefficients range from academically advanced to typically developed to needing some extra help by an I D P. Hence, I believe our experience covers the wide range of student needs. Without a doubt, the most difficult class concept for my kids to comprehend through indirect learning was mathematics. The teachers used creative math videos to accompany reading the math textbook, yet my kids frequently needed additional instructional support from me or my lessons to fully understand the new concepts. On the other hand, we observed both my kids fully learning and practicing new math concepts after a live lecture from the math teacher. My kids' comprehension was close to immediate when the math teacher held a live classroom session or met with my child online. The difference in their ability to independently learn without parental help was astounding. Plus, I fear I am nearing the point of some own math proficiency and may not be able to assist kids much longer. Therefore, I am requesting that as many classes possible, and especially math, be livestreamed to all remote learners in twenty twenty dash twenty-one. Even the remote learners, even if the remote learners are prevented from asking questions in real time. Livestreaming will ensure all students have access to the exact same content at the exact same time. For families who cannot provide their children access to the livestream, the streams can be recorded in real time and posted for later viewing. This is again quite beneficial for remote learners as they will hear the questions and ask by their peers in the classroom and refer the explanations. Ideally, the entire school day can be livestreamed with breaks for lunch, etc. Many elected classes can be livestreamed, streamed, including course and in-classes for all school announcements and social, emotional learning during advisory period can be livestreamed. And if real-time questions or comments from remote learners is not allowed, remote learners can call with questions by emails. Thank you so much for wanting to share my thoughts. That's the end of our public comments.
Can I make a comment? The community, since they can only see the screen of the agenda, if we could say our names at least so they know who's talking, and then we know the color.
All right, this is Phil Bradfalsen, Board President, talking next on our agenda. This is Super Henry for.
And I, just a really brief report, because we've got a couple of, uh, big items on the agenda this evening. Uh, number one, just, uh, wanted to share with the board, an update at the last, at the last board meeting, um, we were transitioning into phase four. We shared an update on some allowable activities that could resume this summer. Uh, one of those was the initial phase of the IHSA, uh, sports plan. IHSA has since released, uh, phase two of their plan that would allow your, uh, camps to resume, actual athletic camps to, uh, to resume. Uh, there is still some, uh, issue of rub in terms of the guidance from IHSA and the guidance from ISB. There's some places where the guidance contradicts, and so, uh, I do know as of today, uh, the Illinois Department of Public Health, uh, was, was, uh, meeting with IHSA to, uh, attempt to, to reconcile those pieces, and so we have not moved into, uh, that second phase of the IHSA plan yet. We've held off until, uh, we get that, that clarity of guidance. I think it's important to make sure that, um, whatever it is that we allow now is going to continue to be allowed as we navigate to, uh, the beginning of this school year. So, um, I, I would suggest that, uh, that phase two of the IHSA plan could possibly, uh, begin as early as, uh, as next week, once that, that guidance is clarified. Again, until, uh, until we clearly get, uh, get that clarification, uh, we're going to hold off on starting that. I received, uh, a number of emails from, um, parents very anxious for, uh, that opportunity to resume, and I understand it based on the importance that, uh, not just sports, but activities have, uh, for our students. Uh, I would just say from the school district perspective, it is not allowed, not wanting for students to have opportunities or trying to withhold that opportunity. We just need to make sure that we do that, uh, in the right way, and we do not start something that they have to come back and, and pull back. So, uh, again, uh, we will get clarification here in the next day or two so that, uh, our, uh, high schools can continue moving forward with whatever, uh, options are available. Uh, second thing I wanted to mention or share with the board, uh, we've got a number of, uh, emails today. I think all from, uh, inside of our community and outside of our community, uh, about a, uh, a collective bargaining concern, uh, involving, uh, some of our contract custodial employees. Uh, I was going to remind the board that, uh, your construct, your contact custodial service, uh, is with A D M, that is a third-party contract service, so we are not directly involved in that collective bargaining effort. The board approved recently, uh, a, uh, a blowover of that, that contract, uh, that had a, what is it, two, one, one point nine percent, uh, increase in it, and historically, that is the increase that's, uh, that's been moved on to, uh, to employees. But again, I understand there's a separate collective bargaining issue that's at play, uh, with, with A D M. So, again, I just want to clarify from the district perspective, uh, we value, uh, our, uh, A D M, uh, contract service, uh, employees. They continue to do an incredible job, uh, for us, but factually speaking, we are not a part of that, uh, that collective bargaining process, and, and I'm confident there are probably some details that we do not know, not being pretty to that collective bargaining process. So, uh, again, we value, we respect, we appreciate, uh, our custodial staff that's worked hard to keep buildings clean and, and get buildings ready for whatever the, uh, instructional plan looks like, um, but we are not, uh, not pretty to that collective bargaining piece, so. Uh, and I guess I would mention that for, uh, anybody that may, may continue to do that. Obviously, the message, I believe, has been clearly heard and received by the, the board, so, uh, honestly, continuing to receive the, uh, the same message isn't going to drive that point home any further. It's been heard and, and understood, so. Uh, and then just the last thing I wanted to mention, uh, listen, I asked for a little bit of help, uh, from, from you in this. A couple of our summer learning opportunities. Uh, I know I started, but you just highlighted a couple of the, the summer learning opportunities that again are, are intended to, uh, to make sure that we do everything we can to bring kids to the, to next school year with, uh, without masks.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Schuler. Um, a few, uh, summer learning opportunities have been scheduled for students. We have our, um, freshman bridge program that is currently running. It's in the learning setting at the North of Lea, Moreville South. We have our online summer school that is, has actually finished the first session and is starting the second session. Um, we also have, we're going to be doing some, um, tutoring for students, uh, we've identified with learning recovery needs, and we've distributed some learning materials for students to continue their, um, summer reading and math skills.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing.
Well, I'd also additional via R E S Y program is currently running as well.
Thank you. Uh, I'll stop there because we've got, uh, a lot of reports coming up on the agenda, so thank you.
Any questions from board members?
A couple quick ones. On the, uh, custodial contract, if we have more clean services, I assume that would be outside of that base contract? Okay. And, and be additional classes. Summer learning, what's the enrollment between this year, say last year? Are they way up, way down, I'm saying?
Um, for the online summer school, it's actually a little bit higher than it has been in the past in terms of, um, our bridge programming. I can follow up with both the student principles to get specific numbers for the board.
And then, I assume if we have sports and so on, masking, how does that work with the sport?
Yeah, uh, uh, so, it's a great question, yeah. And that's some of what's still being resolved is that as we get into the conversation about our reopening plan, it's very clear in the reopening plans, we're going to get to it in a minute, is that masks are recovered and are, are required inside of any school building, and there's, there's some discrepancy on that with the IHSA, uh, plan that's got to be, uh, got to be resolved. So, uh, to, to be determined exactly what the requirement's going to be, but I, my anticipation, we, as students are going to their activity even outside, it would be required until they get to the activity.
You mentioned something there that, that about masks. I mean, anyone going to a school building must have a mask. That's an idea from who? And, you know, again, mostly public comments.
Can, can we hold on? Can I cover that as part of the reopening presentation?
No problem.
Okay. Next up is the consent agenda. We have seventeen items on our consent agenda tonight. Actually, we have two separate consent agendas, but the first one has seventeen items. Number one is acceptance of gifts from Lowell Elementary School P T A. Number two is acceptance of gifts from Addison Elementary School P T A. Number three is acceptance of gifts from Eastbrook Elementary School P T A. Number four is acceptance of gifts from Monroe Mill School P T A. Number five is acceptance of gifts to the Lea Moreville South Base School Football Program. Number six is acceptance of gifts from the Lea Moreville South Base School Tiger Claws. Number seven is approval of flexibility for Board Policy seven point one zero zero, health, eye and dental examinations, immunizations, and exclusion of students. Number eight is approval of the high school, middle school, and elementary school handbooks for the twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one school year. Number nine is approval to open previously closed minutes. Number ten is approval of that I A S eight twenty twenty dash twenty-one annual dues. Number eleven is approval to increase pay lunch price. Number twelve is approval of copy release and associated maintenance renewal agreement. Number thirteen is approval of zero, zero graphic bond paper bid. Number fourteen is approval of friendship paper bid. Number fifteen is approval of bills payable on payroll. Number sixteen is approval of minutes from June tenth, twenty twenty, open and close, and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to February twenty nineteen as allowed by law. And number seventeen is approval of personal record to include employment, resignation, retirement, gain leave of absence of administrative certified classified and non-uni staff. Are there any items board members want to remove from this consent agenda? Okay, is there any information, Dr. Schuler, to share about this?
And just, uh, a couple of things really quickly. Number one, a huge thank you to the first, uh, six items on your consent agenda by, by quick man on exact numbers. You're accepting gifts, uh, in excess of a hundred thousand dollars from those organizations collectively included in that. Uh, board might remember, you did a groundbreaking, uh, last year at Addison Elementary School on the new playground, and so, uh, this is the actual approval of, uh, or acceptance of the equipment that was a part of that very generous, uh, project, uh, among, you know, some other very generous, uh, opportunities. So, uh, we continue to be incredibly appreciative of the support that, uh, we have from not only our community, but, uh, these organizations across, uh, all of our, our schools. Uh, two, I just want to mention that under number seven in the consent agenda, uh, you're approving some flexibility in board policy. I anticipate in August, we will probably have a few more policies where there's similar language, so I'll just take the board back to the end of last school year. You might remember you approved some flexibility in the graduation requirement policy based on circumstance for a single year only. So, uh, we are going to have a few areas where we're going to have to, uh, to adopt different practices than what might normally be in board policy for whatever the reopening of, uh, of school looks like. I'm going to talk about it in a little bit. One of those, though, is that, uh, we generally have earlier date in the year, uh, where we require all, uh, uh, physical health documents to come into us. We've always done a little earlier than what's required in school code, just based on practice in the district, but I think we recognize this year, uh, that we probably need a little bit of time to make sure that families can get all, uh, of those taken care of. So, again, we're not seeking to change policy, we're seeking, uh, temporary flexibility for this year, uh, with that policy. Uh, and then the last thing I just was going to mention, again, uh, thank you to, uh, Chris and to the board, Mr. Crabtree and to the board. Uh, we did a lot of work in, uh, reorganizing the student handbooks last year, uh, a few tweaks this year and some adjustments, but, but again, I think overall, the handbooks were in a much better, more consumable, uh, format, so I just wanted to recognize that.
Any questions or comments from board members?
I'd like to just begin on the handbook, so I just, because board knows this was crabby, by the way. Um, just so that the rest of the board knows, it is an issue that I have always had with the handbooks, with the reability. Reability is so much better. Um, thank you to Charlie, Erica, and everybody else that worked on those. Um, I, I did sit down with each handbook next to each other. I went through and I read every single word. I made some comments. Charlie gets all of my comments. There is one part, Bill, that I'd like to talk to board about, um, and that is showing identification when a visitor enters a building. In our board policy, we state that that would happen at all levels. Currently, it is only happening at the high school level, so I think we either need to do one of two things, have a conversation, and, you know, I think that's what we really need to do, is have a conversation at the board level or reinforce that policy at our elementary and elementary schools. So, um, you know, I, I don't know what that means in terms of handbooks, but I really do think we need to look at that policy and decide whatever we have said we're going to do with that visitors identification. So, forgive the pause.
Yeah, yeah, that would probably be where we'd do it. I know that within our student handbook, we do say that, you know, there's something to changes during the course of the year, and I certainly think Mrs. Boone made a comment, um, directly to Dr. Schuler about changing the, putting a note on the handbooks about changes for the current pandemic. So that may be something in addition, we want to, or what Chris was commenting on, we might run free to the policy committee.
So, Ms. Ronnie, Chris, is your statement relative to current, current situation and just in general of the policy being?
Exactly.
Is your, is your point about the current situation that?
No.
It's in general, actually, actually, we should enforce policy.
I actually agree with that policy.
Yeah.
We should be enforcing it, and we are only enforcing it at the high school level. It has been something, and I, I think I brought it up actually at our Monroe meeting when it was on, on there as well, that we need to look at that and, and make sure that we have that policy, we are following the policy at all part of levels.
Yeah, if we have a policy, we should be following it. Okay.
Any other comments or questions on the consent agenda?
Well, one on the, uh, we finished now June thirtieth of our fiscal year, and the bill list that's in here is, you know, doesn't show description on most of the items. I, I was under the impression that once we start the new fiscal year, we'll have new software that will provide that description.
This is the June thirty bill list, so this is still on the old system. So we're, we're transitioning now as of July one to the new system. So what you're looking at is the bill list and the, the payable payroll from the old system. So next, next one is when we, the, would, will be the first report you'll see from the new system.
Okay. And then one item, I have a question that's from my eye and my stuff's going on. We made, uh, we made a roughly fifty-five hundred dollar payment to the Illinois State Police. What was that?
I believe that's for background checks. Background checks.
Okay.
No, we have to check my account.
Okay, thank you.
I think we're running, I'm going to let my text go about.
Is that for the staff?
For yours?
For I R N S.
Yeah, I just had a question on clarification on number seven with the flexibility, so that is just a pushback date, correct? And not any requirements for, it's like immunizations or anything like that, it's just a pushback of a couple of months.
Correct, just flexibility on the date.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, if I have a motion in the section to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Crabtree?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Erickson. Mrs. Todd, if you have a question, please call them all.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes. Okay, the consent agenda has been approved as presented. Next up is the
Next up is a policy posting consent agenda. We have eleven items. Number one is approval to post revised policy two point one two five, board member compensation expenses for public review and comment. Number two is approval, approval of post revised policy two point one six zero, board attorney for public review and comment. Number three is approval, approval to post revised policy six point, sorry, policy five point six zero, expenses for public review and comment. Approval to post revised policy five point one five zero, personal records for public review and comment. Number five, approval of post revised policy five point two eight zero, duties and qualifications for public review and comment. Number six, approval of post revised policy six point one three five, accelerated placement program for public review and comment. Number seven is approval to post revised policy seven point seven zero, attendance and truancy for public review and comment. Number eight is approval of post revised policy seven point nine zero, release during school hours for public review and comment. Number nine is approval to post revised policy eight point one zero, connection to the community for public review and comment. Number ten, approval of post revised policy eight point three zero, visitors' student conduct on school property for public review and comment. And finally, number eleven is approval of post revised policy eight point one one zero, public suggestions and concerns for public review and comment. Any items that board members will want removed from this consent agenda? Here you go, Dr. Schuler.
And just remind the board that HR Policy Committee met and reviewed all of these recommended changes. These are all part of the most recent edition of PRESS. So PRESS again is your policy subscription service that gives the board updates on the policy based on changes to law or changes to just a regular five-year review process. So our HR Policy Committee reviewed all of these changes. Really, they're pretty straightforward, I think, in terms of what's being adjusted and is recommended for approval. Just one quick comment on number six, the accelerated placement program. Dr. Schley, I think there was a question after the committee meeting just about that being posted on the website, did you make that adjustment?
This is Dr. Schley. Yes, yes, we did make that adjustment on the website to make it available.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments for board members on this consent agenda? Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the policy posting consent agenda as presented.
So moved. Students?
Moved by Mrs. Boone. Seconded, seconded by Mr. Hamlin, Mrs. Hudson, who is called Roll.
Mrs. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes. Okay, the policy posting consent agenda has been approved as presented. Now we move on to our action items. We have two different action items tonight. The first one is approval to post the tentative budget and set the public hearing on the fiscal year 2021 budget. Dr. Schuler?
Mr. Farley's taking his way up for the voting. He's going to take the board through the proposed tentative budget. One of the things he's going to highlight in an early slide is that earlier this week, we did meet with the Finance Committee to review the tentative budget, but also to review one aspect, I guess, one potential adjustment to the budget that we're going to talk with you about as well. But we'll take you through the budget first and then talk through that option. So Mr. Farley, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Phil Farley, Assistant Superintendent here on the budget. We're going to run through the process and posting of the budget, which is an annual process that the Board of Education must have the budget posted for thirty days prior to a public hearing. I'll go through the timeline with the board over a whole public hearing and then approval by the end of the first quarter of the fiscal year. Our fiscal year runs to July one through two thirty of each year. So we're following our normal timeline and process. I'll say, this is, like everything else, has been an unusual year for building a budget. As we looked at it, we're moving forward with it. So what we're going to ask the board to post today is the budget that was presented to the Finance Committee. And I know that they're, we'll have some comments on that as well as some additional options that I'll go through in my presentation. Again, this just outlines a budget calendar. As you see back in January, you remember that when things were somewhat normal, we've gotten the board authorized to start preparing the 202021 budget. We present our financial forecast in January as we normally do, the five-year financial plan that we look at each year. On May thirteenth, we updated the board on what the impact of COVID had had on our financial planning, a lot of change since January. So we give the board an update on some of the financial impacts that were related to COVID-19. This past Monday, we met with the Board Finance Committee and reviewed the budget for posting. Again, we'll have some comments and thoughts on the posting here as we move forward. August twelfth, we are going to have a public hearing at the Cal here at Monroe Middle School. And then on September ninth, the Board of Education will ask the board to approve the 2021 budget. We can make changes up until September on the budget. We'll need ask for approval and we'll bring a formal Illinois State Board of Education document to the board for approval. Part of the process also involves posting a public notice regarding the public hearing that is published in the Daily Herald. A copy will be posted here as well at Cal, that's its location for that meeting. The budget document will be on display at the School Service Center as well as on our website. You may go in here to remember from prior years. We used to have also posted copy of the libraries. That was a kind of longstanding tradition that predated the internet. And so this year, where libraries be in different stages of summer, I would think are not even open at all to very limited access, we're just going to have them available online and at the School Service Center. Want to run through just some charts here that we'd like to share annually to show a little bit of our operational budget. And our operational budget is made up of all funds except for our debt service and our capital projects fund. So this is basically the day-to-day operation for our school district. This chart just illustrates the funding sources, obviously local sources. Like a lot of districts in this area, continue to be the aligned share of revenue that the district receives. And this, this chart goes back to, it shows actuals back to the eighteen, nineteen school year, nineteen twenty just finished, so we don't have those actuals in yet. But you'll see that over time, the red bars, the local share has gone up. You'll notice the jump between eighteen and nineteen, that's when the TIFs expired. So as new growth comes onto the, onto the tax rolls, that obviously gives us a boost in the local share. You also see state revenues increased as they changed the evidence-based formula and started pumping more money into that formula, which was the former General State Age formula. And federal has held pretty solid for over the years. The chart, chart shows our operational expenses. And as you can see, the blue is salaries and green is benefits. Obviously, as we talk about it, you'll see as I go through some of each of the funds, you'll see salaries and benefits makes up a large portion of our overall budget, with purchase services being the gray and supplies being the pink. And then you get into some smaller costs with capital outlay and such. So overall, if you look at the blue bar, we've stayed pretty steady. We've had a little bit in 2017, salaries kept back up a little bit and risen slowly as well as we've tried to hold our health insurance pretty equal as well. Operating expenses per pupil, this is the cost to educate every student in the district. This chart, we've seen it before. This is our benchmarks for districts, and you can see all the benchmark districts, which are Barrington, Naperville, Batavia, Alcorz, St. Charles, ourselves, and District 204. The average spend is a little over fourteen thousand dollars. Across all the districts, we're a hundred that are, our cost per pupil is the second lowest of those seven school districts. So we continue to run efficiently and effectively operationally. Finally, just in our fund balance, and we'll talk about this a little bit more, it's an important item for the board and for the district. And we continue to see grow our fund balances even in a time where we're spending proceeds on capital projects. We're a little over thirty-four percent of our operational revenue. So that is built over time. And again, at a time when we've been doing capital work and starting to pull money from our operations and making this fund do work, that's seven point two million dollars worth of sharing there just works. So again, credit to the board and our spending and being able to continue to run balanced budgets for the last ten years as well as build fund balance and get work done. Going to run through some highlights for the 202021 budget. The recently released CPI was two point three percent. That will impact this budget as we will levy for that in 2020. That usually occurs in November. So that is, that is impacted and included in this budget. Our tax levy distributions, there's a lot of comments on that. As the coming clerk's office and treasurer decided how the distribution were going to go. We were probably about a half percent under what we had collected at this time last year. And while it doesn't sound like a lot, the half percent of a hundred and sixty million dollars levy is still quite a bit, but we hope to see where we are in September when the second half comes. But all in all, we tracked pretty close, so that was good. It was corporate personal property replacement taxes that went on since the early seventies. It goes into our education and I have a social security fund. We received about two hundred thousand dollars more than budget last year, which is good news. We're not quite sure how the impact of that, of the current state of the economy is going to impact corporate earnings and how that's going to look for school districts. We normally get an estimate in August, but we're hearing that we may not even have that estimate for a while. So we're holding that flat right now, given that we did have, didn't receive more than we had budgeted last year. Interest earnings, this is one of the items we talked about back in May. Interest rates have plummeted again. We were, operationally, we were close to a million dollars in interest earnings. This budget, we're down to, you know, three or four thousand dollars. We've cut it down quite a bit because our interest earnings are just not going to be there. Those rates have continued to plummet. So that was something that changed even dramatically from January to May. State funding, there was a lot of uncertainty as we were heading into the state budget. It was obviously an interesting year for the legislature to try and put together a budget for this year. Fortunately for our school districts, the state decided to hold us harmless. We had been receiving about three hundred thousand additional dollars a year in the three years, each of the three years that the EDF was in place. That was what we had in our budget back in January when we were doing our financial planning. We had to take that out when we discussed that in May. But the state, while they did cut it, they held us harmless and basically should receive the same amount this year as we did last year. So that was a huge win for school districts across the states that wasn't because there was a lot of discussion about dramatic cuts or becoming cuts to the school, school budget. So we were fortunate in that regard that our evidence base is going to be, remain at least flat in categorical funding should be funded at the same levels as well. Federal programs, National School Lunch, Title One, are some of the bases in IDEA. We are accessing, and we are afforded CARES funding. I think we've updated the board that we were to receive about one point one million in CARES funding for this upcoming budget here. That number was pared down. Department of Education came out and said private schools would also have access to that money, but it's a little bit different than how title money normally flows to private schools. It's usually, like if it's for school districts, based on your low-income population. The Secretary of Education said, no, it's based on enrollment in the school, the low-income enrollment in the school. So and that, that doesn't matter. So we have private schools within our school district, obviously. And it doesn't matter if those kids reside in our town. It's just the number of people enrolled in school with, within our school boundaries. So that number was pared down to eight hundred and seventy thousand from a little over one point one million. So that, I know that there is still a lot of discussion on that at the congressional level. And I think Congress thought that wasn't a proper interpretation. So I know there's still discussion on that. Melissa's been working very hard on putting together her budget and the CARES grant application. We are using a lot of it for COVID-related impact and really in the area of educational items. We were, we moved up the one-to-one lease for the high schools, so that's was moved up a year. So we're using CARES funding for that. And I think Melissa probably has about twelve or thirteen different line items in her budget that she was able, based on, able to use based on some of the remote learning and other learning options that we're going to be putting into place for next year. So we are using all of that eight hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. And we'll keep the board informed as that ruling changes on how that money is already allocated to private schools. And then Medicaid, we're keeping flat as well. That's federal funding as well, that's tracked through the special age chart. Over to the expense side. Teachers are at two point five percent increase per their contract. Classified staff are at two point one as was in their contract. The non-union administrators are also at two point one percent. Benefits for this upcoming year, we have about a six percent increase in our plan. If you recall, last year it was flat. So so we did, we did keep it flat last year, so this year it did go up. Had a number of big claims, so that impacted. Waiting to see what the impact, you know, again, we got a renewal right before COVID was really hitting. So a lot of, you know, hospitals and procedures shut down. So I'm sure the claims have been down quite a bit, but waiting to see what happened to the backside with the COVID impact. TRS Fed, that's for our grant programs. Those are items that we, any salaries we charge to federal grant programs, there's an additional cost to school districts of ten point four one percent, which I think went down a little bit if I remember Melissa. Over last year, the debt percentage was a little bit higher. We also have related to TRS, we have put in our state budget document not beyond the half payment of the state, which doesn't impact our operating budget or our books, it's an in and out number. And we will include that in the final budget document. That's really the amount the state pays on our behalf towards pensions. The current pension rate, that, actually, that's a typo, I shouldn't say decrease from up to ten point eight seven from ten point nine nine. So that is the rate for our non-certified staff to pay in the social security and I have a pension fund for, for those individuals. And so that is the amount that the district pays towards salaries as far as the current pensions concern. Moving over to our purchase services, supplies, capital, and other. Krieger, you looked at, and I'm going to say this because Melissa will take me there, but if I don't. Her textbook budget did go up, but her overall budget stayed flat. And some of the items that you'll see that are noted there are math programs, phonics in Vern, I hope I spelled that right, Zern program. She probably has a lot more than the business guy, but obviously curriculum-related items under our textbook budget. Technology, their budget highlights are the high school one-to-one, which I previously mentioned, network firewalls, copy refresh, desktop refresh, all items that the board has previously approved heading into this fiscal year. Our outsourced, our upstairs contracts are basically tied into CPI at two point one percent. Or, I think they're one minus the most recent CPI. So those increased by one point nine percent. And transportation, because it's in the middle of three-year contracts, so a two percent increase. O and M, our utilities, electric, gas, sanitation, phone and water. All of those items are down this year, obviously, and you know, past, most of that expenditure was done before COVID really hit and we had to shut down our schools. But Colin and JR did a great job keeping our bills down with our utilities. So credit to them. Tuition, our outplace students, we actually were under budget this year and have adjusted that budget accordingly. It's staying off to a flat. For the first year, school districts, sort of like the TRS payment, districts are required to hold a line item, one line item for revenues and expenditures in their budget for student activity accounts. This is a new item, and it's actually, it's a couple of years old. It took the state board about a couple of years to figure out how they wanted to do it. So when we submit our final budget, we'll have all of our student activity account revenues and expenditures as a budget line item that will be included in the non-eligible document. And then finally, our lease payment for And then finally, our lease payment for the early childhood centers also included budgets of third year payments, I believe, will be the third year payments towards the early learning center. Moving on to capital land, I mentioned earlier, Sherman Durges, we have about seven point two million dollars worth of projects that are going on. As you can see, they're listed, I won't read all of them, but a good amount of work going on, Stephen, JR and his staff, very busy. We were, you know, looking for a bright side. Because our schools were shut down, our contractors weren't able to start earlier than normal and get in and start projects going because the schools were, were shut down. So, you know, JR always talks about his summer schedule is only about fifty or sixty days to get work done, so this will be done more times. So we did, let the contractors loose in the middle of May, once it was determined that we were going to be back in school so they could get a jumpstart on things. So, you know, these projects all lead up about seven point two billion dollars. In addition, the early childhood center is still in progress and the final, I think we're getting close to paying that out as well. I'll talk a little bit about more when we get to the capital projects. COVID nineteen and the budget impact, this is an item we talked about quite a bit at our finance committee meeting the other day. We know there's going to be costs that are going to impact the budget that are outside of what we have posted. The state budget form does have a line item that's called contingency. It's not often used, but I'm guessing it'll show up quite a bit on state budget forms throughout the, throughout the area and throughout the state because there's just so much uncertainty about what's to be expected. I think we've heard about how things are changing constantly and they are, you know, the minute we're looking at buying face shields and the next minute they're not allowed. So, you know, we, there's a lot of uncertainty about how everything is going to operate. We, I think we've got a great plan here that we're moving forward and we're going to have, we're going to need accommodations and move forward with different items. So I have a line, really the big three that I think are going to impact the budget and we'll talk, you know, a little bit more at the end about adding a line item to contingency and talking about how we fund that contingency. But some of the items we've talked about, you know, we're looking at is additional staffing for classroom support, supervision, probably looking at least at a one-year investment on that, but it's, you know, again, there's some, we just don't know what's going to be, where we're going to be a year from now, but that investment's probably, hopefully to here. We talked a little bit about custodial, additional contractual staff from our cleaning services. We need to hire more of those to, folks to help with cleaning. We looked at that, maybe at least a one to two-year investment moving forward. We're trying to, working with JR, we're talking about flexibility with current staffing, if we can shift people around when they work to try and make sure we have better coverage during the day when kids are in school so we can do that additional cleaning that we talked about later. Transportation, in order to meet the guidelines for the fifty rule, we're going to be looking at additional bus routes. That's at least a one-year, again, one-year investment, hopefully. As you look at supply, you hear a lot about PPE, we bought a lot in the prior fiscal year and we're buying, it's going to be to buy, we're buying things as we move forward. That's probably a one to two-year investment. Yes, tax partitions, those type of items, as we talked about how we set up our schools, those are one-time investments. And then additional touch and water stations, that's probably an investment on time. Fortunately, a lot of our schools have, we have at least one in every school, and we can, some schools have more, another high school that have more, they're being bought by boosters and parent, you know, parent groups and things like that, and the district's been putting them in as well, and some schools have used their budget to buy them. So we're looking at additional touch and water stations. So when we get to the end of this presentation, we'll talk a little bit more about how we did that contingency go ahead. Going to run through some charts, not just run through all the funds. The education fund, obviously, is our largest fund. You can see the revenue sources, a little run, eighty-five percent comes from local sources of property tax being the largest. State revenue, about nine percent, and six percent is federal. On the expenditure side, for the head fund, you're looking at eighty-six percent in salary benefits. As I mentioned, we are a people business and our largest cost are in that regard. Purchase services, supplies and capital are in other objects, which is tuitions. That is much smaller, but the salary benefits make up the largest share. Again, the education fund is where we fund our teachers, our staff and everyone that's, you know, related to the education of our students and the products that go along with that. Operations and maintenance, revenue, you can see, again, large portion comes from property taxes, other local revenue, and then we've included some evidence-based funding, money, money, money and business support this. If you recall, we had the ramp up where we were, and we're funding that seven point two million dollars as we, each year we were adding a million in operational costs and starting to fund balance at the use of three million last year, this year it's two million, and next year it's one million, all the way up to operational costs, so it becomes part of our budget. I'm going to talk a little bit on the next slide about the impact from our, something our auditors have asked us to do, both of their program, current, that will illustrate how we're spending the seven point two million over the different. Okay, if you look at our expenditures, we've got about eleven point, a little over eleven million in expenditures. You remember, go back to revenues, we're at sixteen. Our auditors have asked that we, all of our large capital projects be paid out of fund sixty, which is called Capital Projects Fund. So we will be transferring, and there's a board item, the next board item on your agenda speaks to that, is transferring those, that five point two million of operational dollars and two million of, of fund balance to get that seven point two into that separate fund. They feel that's the best place to track it. Historically, we've been running out of all funds, using the fund balance out of the Capital Projects Fund and operating funds out of all of them. So that is a change this year, we've got it, brought it up last November when we met with the finance committee and we talked about it a little bit on Monday as well, that there's a change. You can see this is one fund where we're not having salary-driven, mostly purchase services because we outsource our custodial staff, supplies and materials, and then salary only makes a benefit of the above twenty-six percent of the budget. Debt services, this is the payment on a principal and interest on your debt and also includes the lease payment for the early learning center. You can see literally that comes out of property taxes and then that four percent evidence base is the state money we use to pay the lease. That we, definitely from the start, to be the funding service for lease payment. And then all the expenditures are really just the other, is just the principal and interest payments or, or everything that comes, is expected out of the debt services as well. Transportation, revenues, property taxes make up about fifty-seven percent and state is about forty-two percent. That percentage has come up over time on the state side, which is a good thing because it used to be much more heavily dependent on local dollars as opposed to state dollars. It's a state mandated program for transportation that we're required to do. While funding model is still not where it should be, it's getting better and we're glad we're still holding true on that. Expenditures, obviously, purchase services are outsourced contracts with our bus companies, taxi companies and it's a fall of the purchase services expenditure. I R F, again, I mentioned earlier, this is our pension and social security fund. The majority comes out of property taxes. There's also the other logo, which is the corporate personal property I mentioned earlier that goes into this fund as well by, that's by code. We have a percentage in there, but you see that the majority comes from property taxes and then it's considered a benefit, it's the social, the social security and the pension, so it's a percent type of benefit expenditure. Our capital projects fund, again, this is where we're going to be spending our Sherman Durges numbers, so it's all over one fund. Debt interest earnings about two thousand, we have another a hundred thousand, which is going to be patients towards a playground. We're including that seven point two million dollar transfer from O and M, which is five point two million of operating, two million of fund balance. We have eight point seven million expenditures, which includes our capital projects, which was as listed previously shown, as well as the early childhood center expenditures to build up. Finally, we're working cash fund, we have a hundred and fifty thousand in revenue anticipated in interest earnings. We include over forty, four hundred thousand last year. Our budget was four hundred thousand, we're four hundred and thirty thousand or four hundred and forty thousand, so that obviously is quite considerable throughout in, in interest earnings. And that's one of the line items I had hit pretty good by the, it's one of the funds I get hit pretty good by interest rates. Our revenue by source for all funds, you can see, the majority of it is local with one hundred and seventy-three million, twenty million state and federal, so all, all funds, this includes debt service and capital projects is two, two million. And you can see that, again, the source of all those funds, majority of it is property taxes with ten percent state and four percent federal, eighty-five percent local. Our revenue source by operating funds, again, this is all funds with exception debt service and capital projects. You can see, again, the majority of it is state money and makes up about a hundred and eighty million dollar budget. And again, majority of it is local share property taxes with state and federal committed about the same. Where we're spending the expenditure for all funds, you can see salary and benefits makes up the largest share of purchase services, supplies, capital, they do some fees, which includes the principal interest on bond payments, so expenditures are two hundred and five hundred. Again, when you mix all funds in there with debt services, you can see the benefits and salary percentage does go down. And that's because of those principal interest payments, bringing them, bring those percentages down. And then switching over to the, our operating funds expenditure type salary benefits is a hundred and thirty-five million. You can see purchase services, again, which is wheels, wheels and, and custodial, outsourced seem to make a large share of that budget, supplies and it's a hundred and seventy-five million. And our expenditures by operating funds by operating, you can see, is about seventy-eight percent of salary benefits of our normal operations on a yearly basis, again, including debt service or capital projects. For all fund summary, budgets negative, part of that has to do with the transfer into the capital projects fund, it'll look, it'll look negative because we're transferring those funds over, it doesn't count as revenue, as well as we're still drawing down from our payments for the early childhood center, that is about one point five million dollar payment, and those revenues we received three, two or three budget years ago, I guess I did now, two other years ago. So that money sitting in escrow has to draw out, so there's no offsetting revenue, so that's why all funds looks, looks, it looks to be in a negative position. Revenue by all funds, you can see the head fund, again, is our largest fund overall with O and M, debt service being the next largest, transportation, that's, and I am a smaller percentage of all funds. Expenditures by majority of our expenditures are in the education fund, again, matching with revenues. Sorry, our operating budget summary here, if you look at it, our revenues are anticipated to be a hundred and eighty million, our expenditures are a hundred and seventy-five million, so it would show a five point three five million dollar operating surplus. Again, remember, five point two then when we transferred over to the, capital, we transferred over to the capital projects fund to, a lot of two million fund balance to make up that seven point two million. So really, we're about a hundred and fifty thousand to go, which is really the, the surplus in the working cash flow. Comparative over last year, again, this will look a little different because of the, of the transfer and carrying the positive operating balance in the O and M fund, we're about two point six five percent of operating revenue and expenditures are slightly down. And again, that's just the function of how the O and M funding is in that transfer. Moving back to, I knew it was going to move back to contingency, I don't know if the board has any comments, we've gone through them somewhat quickly, but any, any questions on the, on the budget itself, I'm pretty close before we move back into the discussion contingency.
I think I look confused here going on, but I know that the firework studio staff is by all of the suppliers. I'm just thinking, because cleaning schools is going to be such a high priority, are we putting any kinds of contingency money aside for supply? And I'm just thinking, it's so hard to get cleaning supplies these days. It would, it would be a shame that they say all of a sudden, we can't open schools tomorrow because we're short and we're so reliant on them and then that's a lasting enclosure. Are we doing anything or we are keeping a lease sort of supply to somebody so that we don't have, we don't close school because there aren't cleaning supplies?
Yeah, no, JR, they're a national company, JR has been working with them and making sure that they get supplies and we can talk in the next presentation about what we're doing to try and find enhanced clean products and things that we can get there. If you're right, there is obviously cleaning supply, everything, PPE and cleaning supplies are all in high demand, but we have been working with them to try and get those products in and, and making sure we have a stockpile so we can move forward. So we have had this conversation with our, hopefully, and again, we will, we'll talk a little bit more about the contingency to the cuts of some of that. Because we, again, our custodial outsourced contract covers all our schools with exception of all two high schools. So any of those products we have to buy for our two high school and for all, so we obviously are doing that as well. Other questions? Other questions for the board?
I'll make a couple of comments to Mr. Mapson. Rob and I at Hanlon are the finance committee and we have a lot more detailed questions in our meeting on Monday, but just to clarify a few items, the, and one, we have two significant policies in place. One is a balanced budget and the other is that we don't go below a fund balance level of twenty-five percent. And both of those are retained in this budget and we'll talk about it when we're more in that contingency funding, how we approach that. So that, that, that will be discussed again. You know, basically, one other, you know, and I don't want to get into a lot of detail on any of this because we did it in the committee, but just a couple of items to point out, you know, our bond and interest expenditures are flat and that's because of all the financing we've done over the last number of years. This year, we've been a relatively big jump had we not done all that. So that, that's good. And then the, I guess the, you know, the on behalf, the, you know, funding, you know, there was some talk early on about passing some of the pension costs onto the districts that seem to be dead and water at the moment?
There's been no discussion, not that I worry about.
Okay, so we're not providing anything for that other mode or we are maintaining it too, so. And then the CARES money, again, that was, that's federal money?
Correct.
Okay, and we're receiving about almost nine hundred thousand?
Correct.
And we're going to use that to do a couple of things. One is to get one-to-one computerization on devices on the high school?
Correct.
And then the other is to pick up some of the, what?
Basically, Melissa, you want to talk, have to talk about it?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Bartley. A number of the items that were included in the ed services budget, we moved over to the CARES grant budget, and so a majority of those are digital subscriptions. There are also settings for tutoring students, both during the summer and also running an extended date program when school resumes.
So in light of what Chris just asked, it does include extra clean supplies?
No.
It doesn't include if we need more staff in order to accomplish some of these smaller classroom sizes and so on, is that fair to say?
Correct. We, the CARES funding is all educationally based items, whether it's technology or educational support items.
So leading into the next item, at this point, we haven't considered any additional costs for staffing, cleaning and any bussing and whatever it may be?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. We're down, we're down to the contingency world.
Any other questions? Maybe other couple of questions? Go ahead. This is Dave Wong.
But the first question, the impact on the year we just finished for COVID, would we expect to see that disclosed in the audit? Do you have any feel for what that impact has been?
You know, I think we, we will have cash basis numbers soon in the audit, we usually get in November, but usually by, we do auditors, I saw timelines to be a little different, but sometime by mid-September, we should have a pretty good feel where we ended up on a accrual basis. I might, I would say we're pretty close to break even this year. Couple items that impacted us on a cash basis, whether we delayed the collection fees, which a lot, good portion of that comes in in June. So on a cash basis, we didn't receive that in June. We also had quite a few reimbursements that we had to do for the all-day kindergarten program, the before and after school program. the before and after school program. We did save in the area of some salaries and subs and things of that nature, some of the utilities and that, but all in all, I think we break even if we, you know, if some of those, you know, I think if we would have had it normally here, we would have been in a positive situation and added to our fund balance, but just given some of those factors, I think we're probably pretty close to break even and assuming the accrual play out that way as well.
Okay. The other question I have, you said this capital project fund is new?
It's not new. We, we, it was set up by ISB, used to be called site construction fund. It was mostly done for referendum projects. You put your referendum proceeds and spend out of there and was outside the operational, so you didn't have negative balances. And they changed the name and format of how you can use it to call it capital projects where you could, because a lot of school districts would do work out of, you know, out of their fund balance and, and their operating budget and it would show, these looked like they had negative budgets, which really wasn't fair because when you're spending on fund balance, you really don't have revenue. That's offsetting the cost of construction. So they created, they allowed school districts to start transferring money into the capital projects on the fund balance. So their budgets didn't look like they were running these negative, you know, large negative balances. So we had been using that in that manner where we were transferring our fund balances over to do construction projects out of capital projects and then leaving the operational and our sub-fund of our O and M is called capital renewal. And that had been set up by the board prior because they wanted to really set aside a separate sub-fund of O and M to illustrate where the capital projects were occurring out of, so it wasn't kind of lumped into the normal budget, it was more of a tracking item. Our auditors had came to us and said, you know, really, it's probably better, we're keeping wise and just do it all out of there. I think it kind of throws the budget off a little bit because when you look at that chart with our, you know, our, our operational, operating budget, it looks like we're running a surplus when we're real happy because we're transferring that money out, but our large surplus, we already still have a small surplus, but, so this is the first year we're doing that, doing it that way.
Okay. And I think you might have just answered my other question. So there's, because there's, we talked about the 8.7, but there's a total capital liability of 9.2 because there's 575 in operating funds. So that 575 doesn't go in this capital project fund. That's for the project?
No, then, yeah, then it does not go into capital projects.
Okay. And why is that? Just because they're operating in nature?
They're smaller operating type projects, yes.
All right, thanks.
Couple of items in the response to that. Number one, I look at, if we look, if you look at the, the consent agenda, you remember the bills payable and where it shows the financials, you can see that in cash basis reports in there show that we're breaking basically in the operating funds this year. And then that transfer thing, the reason that gets dealt with that way is that when you do the school rating, you know, we talked about it in the audit, about the, what do you want to call it, the financial status. Okay, one of the things in there is that, you know, you get written down for is if you're showing deficit spending. So if you plan to have capital projects, you know, and you build up fund balance to do that, if you had those capital project costs in that budget or in that operating cost, you would show deficit spending, which really isn't the case here. You know, you're consuming, you know, you're providing for that in a different way because it's a, it's a non-recurring type cost and so on. So, you know, it's kind of a byproduct of the rating system that kind of doesn't deal with it if you don't treat it the way that they're, that the auditors now are talking. So it's, you know, kind of horrible, but it's with this.
Thanks. Anybody else have questions? I had two, I had two questions. First one, can you clarify where the lease payment is for Jefferson?
It's in the debt service fund. You're talking about the actual payment to the bank for the lease is in the debt service fund?
Debt service.
Debt service. Okay, just help me clarify because I see zero. Under debt service fund expenditures, it was 95700 last year and it's zero this year? Page 11, are we missing something?
I'll, I'll take that. It should be in there.
So it's not in the capital projects fund?
No, it's not. We, we track the expenditures to build ability in the capital projects.
So the 1.5 million that's in the capital projects fund is funding some of those other, other owner costs, I think was the label we put on it that has to be a playground or part of it, not building stuff. And then second question, I guess, is a revenue question. I'm just curious how hopeful we think we are with this revenue? I mean, there's a couple of line items that amount to 2.9 million, the CPPRT, you mentioned that a little bit, food services leveled from last year. I'm just, you know, how hopeful are we in those two numbers? Because you could probably talk yourself into some pretty good reasons why we're not going to get what we had last year?
Yeah, I think the CPPRT is just, you know, we're not, it's just, we're not sure where that's going to end up. You know, we've, there's been different theories about it, it may not be as impacted as, as we may think. Food service, you know, again, if our revenue is down, that means our expenditures are going to be down as well, most likely, because we're not, if we're, you know, if we're not pointing at revenue, we're not necessarily, you know, having to offset any expenditure. So that, that impact could impact both ways on both line items. And then, you know, again, if we, if our counts are up and our frame reduced and we do get a federal reverse, that helps offset that as well.
I'm, I'm at least is, here if you go on page 10, you'll see it, and it's the debt services Can you repeat that, Dave? Page 10, here, you'll see the debt service fund payment for Ed's first question. Apparently in the presentation was this one. But I think that might answer your question. Well, page 10 under the 20, 21.
Yeah, I'm not sure why they got, I'm not sure how they got zero down, so I'll fix that.
You're right.
It said the 17 million, if you look on the right count, it should be, part of it should be a one line up.
Oh, okay. All right, let me see, did you get your question started?
We'll break that up. Move on to contingency?
Yeah.
As I mentioned previously in the presentation, there is a contingency line item in the budget. And we had a good discussion with the finance committee about the, the use of that contingency line item. The way it works, the way it was set up was it allows school district to plug money in to that contingency line item and then gives the ability to, the ability to spend it down. We would chart, so in other words, I had mentioned the salaries, if we know we're going to have need an extra of, use a number of hundred thousand in salaries, we could transfer, if we plug money into the education fund, we could transfer that hundred thousand of salaries to, from contingency into sal, the salary line item. What we would do is probably with each monthly report that the board gets, financial report, keep a tracking of that and then at the end ask the board to approve it. It does allow you, does help you from not having to go back and amend your budget and if you build in contingency, especially in a year like this where you don't know what's going to happen. So we had a good discussion about how we, how we would do that. I think the, the consensus of the finance committee and Robert, Jim can jump in here is, as we look at our funding for capital projects, we would, instead of doing our 5.2 million and 2 million dollar transfers, we'd do 4.2 and another 3 million this year instead of winding that down for this year, just because that will afford above a million dollars that we could reallocate to our education fund, our O and M fund and our transportation fund. Probably 500,000 in the ed fund, 200,000 in the O and M and 300,000 in transportation as we try and figure out how much we're going to need. Obviously by the time we adopt the budget, we'll have a better feel for what those numbers may look like, hopefully start at school, so we can adjust it at the final budget line item, but, you know, again, we feel that there's a number of different items that, that we, we may have to do, going back to that earlier chart. You know, again, salaries, I think, you know, as we look at it, we're working with Charlie and HR on additional staff and Dr. Sluggie, additional staff in the classrooms, support, supervision, support could be in the nursing area if we're going to need, require additional nursing help. Custodial, again, we talked about additional, attract custodial staff and then transportation and additional routes. We don't believe we'll need them, I'll, I'm going to get that in the next presentation, but we're continuing to look at how that, that will look. And then just, yeah, continue purchase of PPE equipment and desks, cots, partitions, and then again, adding water stations. So as we talked about, we thought this year we would keep the fund balance transfer, we're still at a, we're at 30, ended at 34%, we feel we'll still be at a strong percentage within the board's 25 to 40% range, that we would do an additional million instead of doing 2A in a fund balance transfer this year for 3 million. And then that allows us to reallocate some of the funds in, you know, built into the budget now across those three funds.
Okay, quick clarification. So what was the fund balance threshold that was built into the beginning of this presentation this budget year?
It was a little over 34%.
A little over 34%. So by policy, your floor is at 25% and then just based on operating budget, a, a percent of fund balance equates to about how much in actual dollars?
Um, 2 million.
So based on the plan this year, you would have eroded about a percent out of your fund balance. So again, you go from 2 to 3 million dollars. I'm just trying to give you both like a dollar figure and a percent figure, you'd be going from a million, or from 1% to about 1.5% that you would be eroding out of that fund balance you have. But right now it's about 9.5% over your floor.
So that would allow us to reserve a million out of O and M for that contingency?
Yeah, a million, yes, exactly. Yep. And that contingency would not have to be spent only on O and M, but it could address some of what, correct, you just asked about, again, you know, the staffing costs and expenditures, which I think are the unknown. If there ever was a year to build contingency into your budget, this is the year, right? I think without a doubt, this is the year to have some, some flexibility and, and again, you know, the, the board to its credit is you put yourself in the position where I think you have this option this year for the way you addressed that in capital spending.
One other, one other item, when we pass a budget, I mean, there's some cases we passed when, like the railroads used to protest their tax payments, you know, the real estate, their property taxes. And one of the ways they were successful is that the school district over expended its budget. So even though they may have had another revenue source to cover. So one of the reasons the contingency thing involved was so that you wouldn't over expend your budget. In theory, by publishing this, we're getting the community to say to us that they're authorizing us to extend that amount. And then if the contingency comes up and we haven't budgeted, you know, technically that could be a protest, you know, that might be successful in real estate taxes. So, you know, it's always a better, a good consideration to that, so, you know. And just to touch base again, what is our operating revenue? Approximately 200 million, give or take?
Our operating about 180 million.
180 million. So 1% of it is 1.8. So if we were, it's about a half a percent erosion of fund balance if, if we were spending, we'd take a million out, is that, are there, is that a statement?
Yeah, yeah.
This is Rob. Dr. Trub, what are the other options we've got besides contingency?
Yeah, really, so I think, so two sides. On the, on the spending side, obviously contingency gives you the ability to, to address whatever spending need comes up. The other way you could create contingency other than the draw on fund balance would be to cut elsewhere, right? To look, to find a million dollars in reductions elsewhere in the budget that would go into contingency. And again, I guess it would certainly suggest as you looked at that last year, I mean, we budgeted, we budgeted pretty tight, right? There's not, when you look at where the, the money goes in terms of staffing, right? We know where our staffing plant sits right now. So you would have, and the only way it would be to find a million dollars in reductions elsewhere would probably have to come from headcount or some other personnel costs.
So you'd be cutting programs, classes, class size, something?
Cutting something for the very purpose of creating flexibility to address a need that we're concerned may be there.
Thank you. How, so this, you know, this year's budget is largely built around CPI last year, right? The CPI last year has established people loving for this year. If you go off, I think I said that correctly, if you go out a couple of years, you know, there's a lot of, a lot more unknowns than we have right now. So is this process we're going to go through in the next year or two years out going to be a little bit more challenging for the board as we, as we think about one investments we want to make with buildings and?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think it's going to be, you know, the next couple of years could be a little interesting. We do have a major TIF that's going to end and that's going to, you know, I mentioned in the revenue slide I showed earlier, we saw the increase in local share. There's a pretty big TIF that's going to come out in 2022, Levy, and it'll impact the 22, 23 budget and the 23, 24 budget. That'll have a very positive impact for the school district. But again, I, you know, there's a lot of unknowns. The CPI is still tracking pretty low right now. You know, if the economy starts to rev up here, then, you know, again, like I always say, gas prices seem to drive it, so if you follow gas prices, that'll kind of tell you where the CPI is going to go. You know, if prices start to go up, you know, you could see that CPI rebound. But, you know, again, I think there's, you know, obviously factors at the state level that we have to be, keep an eye on. Some other things, you know, you mentioned the pension shift and some of those things. I don't see those, anything like that happening for a while in the states that are bigger issues right now. So, you know, obviously we're going to have to keep our belt tight on expenditures and as we look at those capital projects, we may need to, you know, see where we're at with our Sherman Durst formula and evaluate if 72 is the right number or maybe it's a little bit less and how we, how we attach those projects.
Okay.
That goes back to the funding on the Sherman Durst book. Basically, we set up a plan about using operating money of, what, 4 million the first year, 5 million, 6 million, and ultimately saying that we will no longer be using any fund balance. You know, the assumption was we wouldn't be adding to fund balance every year. I mean, two years ago, June 30th, 19, we had, we had quite a, you know, a good year in the fund balance, which has given us the ability to do this, what I, you know, this contingency thing we're talking about. But, you know, at the end of that, what, two years, I guess now, we will be in theory funding the entire seven plus million dollars out of operation of money. That's going to be the challenge each year that deteriorates. So, you know, yeah, we do have some things to deal with, you know, and, you know, that's kind of what we committed to the community after the, after the referendum and so on. So, you know, you know, on the other hand, down the road, we're going to see, you know, debt service is going to go away, you know, so that'll be a substantial potential reduction in taxes. And so I think there's a balancing act that's going to have to happen in the future to deal with the, the general overall maintenance of the buildings. I mean, we got into this hole by not providing those kind of costs. That's, you know, historically how we got, you know, we got in such a deficit situation. So, you know, we have to, you know, we can't continue to, you know, you know, defer again and defer and that's what we did for many years, but now it's, you know, we've been addressing. So, you know, but it's getting more challenging as we use more and more operating, so.
And, and as we use more and more, there's consequences to that, things that we might want to do, members of the community might want to do that we're not even doing because we're committing so much of those operating dollars to the buildings, building improvements, so.
Right. I think Rob touched on before, if we didn't have that fund balance built up a couple of years ago, what would we be doing now to fund these costs? And that, that's program reductions or staff size, whatever. So, I mean, those are the things that still, you know, loom ahead of us, so. Another debt, hopefully.
All right, any other questions?
Just, I, I think the finance committee had a desire to include the posted budget to have that contingency a lot of it in there. I don't know, Jim, or Rob, if you want to?
So, so basically, what, what you're voting on tonight is to post the budget. What you will be posting is a slight modification for what's in your book because we would build that contingency into the budget that's, that's posted. So just to make sure that the board knows that and would be okay with that, what you should be voting to post tonight would be a slight modification to what's in the book to address the contingency. book to address the contingency.
Okay. Can I have a motion and a second to post a tentative budget as modified for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one?
So move.
And set the public hearing for second budget on Wednesday, August fourth, twenty-twenty seven PM at Holland Middle School, Resale Six Hundred Here Road, Orangeville, Illinois, six zero five five five.
So move.
By Mr. Matheson, is that good?
How's that?
Second by Mr. Handlin. This is Hudson, please call room.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Booton?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Logg?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes. Okay, the motion that says ten of the budget for fiscal year twenty-one and set the public hearing has been approved. Second action is related to what we just talked about, approval of the resolution authorizing the transfer of monies from the operations and maintenance fund to the capital projects fund. Any additional information?
No, and actually, the resolution is still going to, because what you're actually transferring over seven point two million dollars. So it's approving the resolution that's transferring the entire Sherman Durst spend so that it's, that doesn't get adjusted based on what we just did.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, can I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of monies from the operations and maintenance fund to the capital projects fund?
So move.
By Mr. Matheson.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Erickson, Mrs. Hudson.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. Booton?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Logg?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes. Okay, the resolution authorizing the transfer of monies from the O and M fund to the capital projects fund has been approved.
Just as I'm posing a comment on that, I just want to recognize for the board, I think, based on a personnel report, I think at the previous meeting, I think Mr. Farley, this is the last budget that he will be presenting to the board, correct? Did you say that? Mr. Farley has set up a retirement of this year, has presented many balanced budgets to the, to the board, so I just want to recognize that.
All right. Here we go. The discussion I've just, first is the reorganization of schools, presentation of the district two hundred roadmap, roadmap for reopening. Dr. Schuler, any?
Thank you. So we've got a couple people that are going to tag team on this presentation and I wanted to mention to the board, obviously, you have copies of the reopening presentation in front of you. It's going to be projected up on the screen for anybody that's still watching through YouTube. The presentation we're going to go through tonight is uploaded to the, to electronic school board, right, to that agenda item site. We will get it in the end of this presentation tonight to the communication plan. And while we'll go out to the community tomorrow, I hope we share this information tonight is not only this presentation that we're going to go through, there is a more detailed document that, that contains, you know, very little detail than what's in the presentation that we're going to, we're going to go through tonight. There's a lot of information that's at play as we've not only evaluated options for reopening of school, but ultimately settled on a plan that, that we're recommending. And I've continued to stand, this has been shared a couple of times tonight, this is our plan as of July. I provide no guarantee that something will not shift in guidance or in oversight that may not make slight, more significant adjustments to this. And in a little bit, as we go through a little bit of the background of the challenges, this is the challenge, right? The challenge is we know that the start of school looms just a little over a month. And yet we recognize that guidance is still changing very regularly, even as we stand a little over a month from the, the opening of school. And so, again, this is our plan as of today and very appreciative to everybody that's helped us. So a little bit of background as, as we set up context for this, I think, is the board knows and in a number of public comments that came in tonight, there was recognition of the work that the entire system did, starting March the seventeenth, when we suspended in-person instruction, flipped to a remote or e-learning experience. We ran that for about the first month and then as of April seventeenth, the governor suspended in-person instruction for the balance of the school year. And so we shifted our focus to making sure that we could bring closure to a school year in that, that e-learning format. In about the early to middle part of May, as the school year was being closed out, we did start to shift our attention to reopening plans. So even in, in May, as we were bringing closure to the year, we began to shift the work of our core team, our planning team, to start focus on, focusing on reopening plans. We did that knowing that we were awaiting still, obviously, guidance from the state, but just felt as though we had to start getting some of the groundwork laid so that we were prepared with options. And so we're going to talk tonight about a plan that had laid out options. We began to develop multiple options so that we were ready when the guidance came out more quickly, zero and an option. In early June, we did do a survey of our, our parents asking their, their thought or their comfort with returning to in-person. So as the state shifted to phase four and in-person instruction was identified, even without the details on it, we did ask our parents for their comfort around that and we shared those results with the board, I think, at the last meeting, part of an agenda item. Depending on the level, anywhere from seventy to seventy-five percent of our parents indicated an interest in the return to e-learning and a willingness to. And again, that was in front of some of the guidance that we're going to go through tonight and they adjusted those numbers slightly, but that led us to understand two things in our planning. One, we wanted to return to in-person to the degree that we were able to. We do believe, and again, you heard it in the public comment, that we designed the system for in-person instruction. We think we're best in that, we're in-person. We know and we recognize that, that e-learning opportunities have expanded in recent years, especially at the secondary level, what, what we believe are best, where we're in front of kids. And so I think that became context, but we also recognize at the same time that we have families that do desire to have e-learning option in the, in the fall. It was clear through the survey that, well, I mean, seventy to seventy-five percent of our families indicate willingness or interest in returning to in-person. We definitely had a percentage of families not comfortable with that. And so that really kind of expanded our planning options to really what became a fourth option or option B that we'll talk about, which is a remote option by choice. So that's kind of where we are. Again, just, just a reminder of the week of August seventeenth is, is when we start school. So Restore Illinois is the plan that the governor advanced in terms of the reopening of our state. And again, in the first three phases of that Restore Illinois plan, we continue to operate in a, in a remote or e-learning environment. Phase four in that plan is when in-person instruction can and should resume. And then again, toward the end of June, I think it was June twenty-third and twenty-sixth is really when the guidance came out from the Illinois State Board of Education, giving us additional information on what that in-person opportunity could look like. So that's what we're going to pick up. Couple of challenges, and we've talked about this, but I just want to reiterate them as, as we plan, right? We know that there are conflicting needs and interests, right? There's interest in returning to in-person learning and the experiences that come from in-person learning and balancing that with, with obviously the desire and need to reduce transition in the community, right? Balancing health, balancing in-person instruction. We know there's a challenge with constant change, right, in, in guidance. And so we've had guidance that's been released, changed, changed back, changed back again, right, as it's gone through. And so that, that, that constant shifting landscape, and I knew it was mentioned earlier tying in under, under public comment, I'm not convinced that we're done with that shift in, in changing guidance or continue. Be some discussion today on the national level about candidly where the CDC, they said, in terms of some of their pieces. So we just have to recognize that. Scope, we know we have a large system, right? And, and so we know as we're planning for, for a system candidly not only being in a K-12 or EC-12, EC-22, H-22 system, right? We've got a big scope that we're planning for and we recognize that this is happening in the time crunch of that moving start to, to school. So we can't unfortunately wait to make this decision in the beginning of August, understanding that school will start two weeks later and so understanding that there's some choice in our plans, we need to give people time to make that choice. We need to give our human resource department and our staff time to make choices that they need to make and conversations that they need to make so that we make sure we're ready to staff whatever options are. And then the final thing that I've just mentioned is that really for us as well, all of this work is happening, right, in this virtual environment. So any of the planning, any of the teams that we brought together and tried to engage, we had to do in a, in a remote or a virtual environment ourselves. And candidly, that, that's complicated, right, is to try to get that work done. So a couple of non-negotiations. So I mentioned when ISB reduced its, or resets its guidance documents. ISB's guidance documents made a couple of things very clear that we're going to continue to come back to in, in our reopening plans. Number one, face coverings are required, right? Inside of our buildings, face coverings are not an option, right? They are required, right, that students and staff will have to wear. That's not, not the goodness as a choice. We know that there's a limit on, on the size of gatherings to fifty, so in any one space, you cannot have more than fifty people. That will apply to not only instructional classroom settings, that will apply to settings like lunchrooms, settings like gymnasiums, field houses, places where you may historically have more than fifty kids, right, in one space, we'll reduce to that. We know that we need to do simple screening with students and staff, if they come into the building. We know we have to enforce increased cleaning and disinfecting protocols. And we know that physical distancing remains important. And in the ISB document, physical distancing remains an important concept when possible. So it's recognized that there are some situations in the natural flow or, or work of the building where that's going to be challenging, but the effort needs to be to adhere to those physical distancing protocols. And again, clearly from the State Board of Education, the desire is to return students to in-person learning as much as possible, with a priority being on our youngest learners and learners with specific needs. So how did we go about approaching the work? We built a hell of an umbrella, core team, students, boot and staff on that core team from the board, representing the board, along with administrators, district staff, leadership. We had the support staff, instructional staff. And then we built seven subject-specific teams. So as we talked a little bit about the work that, that was done in building the scenarios, we knew that there were seven very subject-specific areas that we had to address, including instruction, physical distancing, what does that look like in all aspects of a school operation, health, SEL, technology, human resource, finance, and then communication. So we're going to go through those, those pieces. Just a couple of foundational beliefs that really guided the work that we did and the approach that we took. And again, a lot of these are foundational beliefs that obviously reflected as well in the guidance documents that came from the board. We do want to make sure that we protect the health and safety of all students and staff, right? Health and safety, we recognize learning is incredibly important, that's what we do, but health and safety has to, to remain a paramount concern. We know that we want to focus on safely bringing students and staff back, right, to, to school, but making sure that those practices not only get kids to school, but allow us to keep them in school. And I've shared a couple of times that as we talk a little bit about partnering agencies, a lot of the ISB guidance helps us figure out how we get kids back into school. It will be consultation with our local health department as we get them back that will determine how we correct them in school. So as we get students and staff back and deal with confirmed cases of COVID-19, it becomes our local health department that becomes instrumental in helping us with any kind of contact tracing that we need to do and then making decisions about either students or staff that may need to be quarantined or excluded from, from school. We do know that we want to continue as a foundational belief to ensure that we build as much rear into our instructional program we can, continues to be important. And relationships, CL, continues to be a priority for us. And so our goal was to build this reopening plan that's consistent with guidance, right, that reflects the interests that we have as a community. And then finally, and importantly, we want to make sure that our reopening plan will allow us to adjust to circumstances. So where we start the year candidly may not be where we are a month into the, to the school year. And if we need to shift from one modality or one plan to another, we need to make sure that the system is set up and, and ready to make that adjustment. We go from in-person to remote learning or e-learning again, we need to make sure that that transition is obviously easier and more seamless than what is this year. And conversely, if we start the year in, in a hybrid model at certain levels, we want to make sure that that model will allow us to transition back to full in-person as soon as conditions would suggest that, that we can. So however we built the models, we've done it with the idea that we can transition, right, between them. And so what we're going to talk to you about this evening really are four different elements in our planning. We call them Plan A, Plan B, Plan C. These will all potentially be elements of our plan. So Plan A, in-person daily instruction, you're going to hear us talk about for elementary, early childhood, our transition center, you know, a plan that brings those students back on a daily basis. Plan B, which is a hybrid plan, an alternating schedule plan, we're going to talk about relative to our middle and high school students. Plan C, which would be a seamless transition back to e-learning, should, should need to be used. We're not starting the year recommending an e-learning plan across the system, we'll need to be ready, I'm sure we need that. And then Plan D, which up on the screen, you'll, you'll see described as the virtual academy, would be the e-learning plan by choice. So parents that elect to, to go fully remote will do that through, I would call it a virtual academy. Couple of resources and partnerships, again, that I mentioned already, will be used in development of this plan. Obviously, the guidance document from the Illinois State Board of Education. And again, I want to mention it's been asked that the guidance in that document, we do need to, we, we do need to make sure that we are consistent with expectations that are laid out from the state. We follow guidance from the elementary department of public health, the H County Health Department. Heard records earlier, a report from the American Association of Pediatrics, that certainly we looked at that strongly suggested that a presumption of in-person learning is likely for youngest of learners. And then we partnered not only with the H school districts, but several of our, our K-12 counterparts, right, that have been built. I will tell you as of this, this presentation tonight, we are one of the earlier districts in terms of sharing our plan. Most of those districts will be sharing or presenting their plan in the next week or two. The only local district that I know has already officially presented its plan is Glen Ellen, District Eighty-Nine, the elementary district, and they, they presented their plan earlier this weekend. They are recommending full in-person. They are just a K-8 district, so elementary, middle school. And then, of course, our legal counsel reviewed the, the plan that we're presenting, we shared with you that, that tonight, and it's up to the board.
So as Dr. Schuler mentioned, health and safety of our students and staff is top priority. We're going to talk through a few, a few details that are really important to recognize as we plan the reopening of our schools. First, we do have a home simple screening prior to each school day that is in process of being developed and. of being developed and certified where our plan is self-certified, that students are symptom-free before coming to school. We work on a detailed process to respond to symptomatic students at all throughout school day. And we also have separate rooms identified in all our school buildings to assess students that are symptomatic. We've had a team, a health team, led by Sue Vasco and myself, working on the protocols throughout the summer. Mr. Farley will lead to this later on, but we have increased cleaning procedures planned for before, after, and during the school day, as well as increased ventilation. Again, Mr. Farley will dive deeper into that. But we know that increased cleaning and increased training is going to be needed not only for our staff and students on all safety, health, and hygiene practices. Additional safety protocols, certainly reducing the sharing of objects. Dr. Schuler mentioned earlier, the required face covering to an even the school. Physical distancing in classroom and common areas, both for our staff and students. And certainly visuals and signage will help with that as well as lessons and training in that area. And then the last piece on here, certainly this is not an exhaustive list. There are other health and safety protocols as well. Cohort management, our ability at all levels to manage cohorts of students, depending on where they are in the building, can add different benefits. So that cohort management plays into our ability to not only get students to stay long, as Dr. Schuler mentioned, keep our schools open. One of the key pieces in the guidance and a key consideration and also part of our health and safety protocol is the impact of physical distancing on all of our operations. The Illinois State Board of Education guidance in partnership with the Illinois Department of Health recommends physical distancing as much as possible. The American Academy of Pediatrics recommends three to six feet of physical distancing when feasible. So it is about mentioning that physical distancing really impacts many of our school operations, from classroom capacity and configuration, scheduling, instructional practice, our staffing pattern, and really how we can keep our schools open throughout school days. The physical distancing impact plays a big piece in how we plan the reopening of our schools. You saw this slide earlier. Plan A is a plan for in-person daily. I'm going to talk you through the in-person option that we will offer our elementary and early childhood students. Mrs. Murphy is going to talk you through the in-person daily plan that will be offered for our transition students. Before we dive into that in-person plan, I think it's important to know that as schools plan their reopening across the state, across the area, across the country, there are schools that are considering exploring hybrid models in all those scenarios at the elementary level. Just for context, what those hybrid models are? Few examples here for consideration. An AB schedule is where students attend every other day and then take part in five hours if they're in a state of online, of asynchronous learning, maybe learning, really e-learning type activities when they're not in the building on a off day. Another hybrid model is a half-day schedule where students attend school for half of the day and then take part in two and a half hours of e-learning or asynchronous learning for the other half of the day if they're not in the building for attendance. At the elementary level and early childhood level, we do see a gap and are recommending the option to our EC-253 students to come back for a full day of school each day with physical distancing measures in place. With this option, we will have to reduce some class sizes of our elementary students based upon enrollment in space. That reduction of those class sizes really is due to physically distancing our seats from one another, making sure they're all facing in one direction. So physical distancing impact comes into play there. Bringing our students back for a full day would give our students access to instructional subjects and interventions, but parts of the day are going to look different. Lunch and recess will take place in groups of less than 50 students. All our early childhood students that are in this plan will be able to return with physical distancing measures in place. One of the pieces that's key to consider in this is our heavier elementary students in school for the full day is that we certainly will have to be creative, thoughtful, deliberate around strategies and practices to give our students and staff breaks from the mandatory running of face coverings. We have an elementary team that actually had a faculty that asked, did we think about that? What things do we put in place that are purposeful for giving staff and students breaks for these? So the considerations and really in-person versus hybrid at the early childhood and elementary level. When we look at the in-person opportunity, first and foremost, and I mentioned this earlier, the state and health protocols. At the elementary level, we have the opportunity to manage our cohorts of students, meaning our students are in a whole new class. And when they're moving, possibly to a PE or to an intervention, we have tight arrangement of those smaller groups of students, given the size of our building and given the structure of our elementary school. In a hybrid model, this would require childcare for many of our working parents and they need to make alternative childcare arrangements for learning support on e-learning days. Certainly during childcare or those other times, you would not have a cohort management. Students in childcare would be in different areas, possibly mixing at different camps or different child cares wherever it may be. The other consideration as we worked out with the option of full day, each day instruction for elementary students is that our youngest learners don't have the most from being in-person with our teachers. We know that school's going to look different, but we believe that in-person instruction, face-to-face instruction, that there is no replacement for that for our youngest learners. In a hybrid model, this would limit that face-to-face in-school instruction. It would require through our maybe scheduled five o'clock hours of e-learning, part of the mandates right now, of at-home learning and e-learning days if our students are not in school. And much of that e-learning would not be synchronous, would not be live because our classroom teacher would be teaching in a separate group of students. The other piece and benefit to in-person is that this gives our students consistent access to interventions and supports. Limited time in a hybrid model would limit access to intervention and supports. An in-person model also gives our students access to the arts and to PE, the specials. While again, those P E art and music may look different and more of the scenes and teams and stuff, you know, in a little more detail of what those pieces are going to look like, we know that we can offer P E art and music when our students are with us on a daily basis. In a hybrid model, access to those would be limited and really move to that asynchronous
Thank you, Dr. Spillagie. This is Melissa Murphy. The other program that we would be bringing back students on a daily basis would be at our transition center. And so this is really an update of where the work sits right now for our transition center. So Erica Exstrom and her team have been reaching out to every one of our families that is slated to come back to our transition center or might be new to our transition center. They're getting a personal phone call. And we're speaking with each of them and we're asking a few questions. We're asking, are you planning to return? What's the factor in that decision? And we're also asking about their transportation needs. And so once we have a complete data set around who's going to be returning, there is a chance we may need to explore some additional space options for the students at the transition center. And so we're prepared to do that work. Dr. Spillagie, Mr. Farley, myself, Dr. Kyle, we're all working with Erica Exstrom on that. Another thing to note about our transition center is ISB's guidance that came out on 2/30 that was very specific to special education, did have caution around transition programs returning to that community-based learning opportunity while we're within this phase for, you know, Illinois plan. So where I say with that is now we are currently working with our legal counsel on what that looks like, but it should be noted, we don't expect that that community-based learning program is to look the same next year. But we do have a team of special education members that are working very hard to increase those learning opportunities for our students when they will be in-person. Moving into middle school and high school. So the model that we have selected for middle school and high school is a hybrid model. We feel that this is the safest and healthiest model for our students to return to in-person instruction. It allows our students to continue to change classes seven, eight times a day and have their learning needs met with that schedule that they have put together for each student. So what is a hybrid model? What a hybrid model is, is we will be taking our student population into school, we'll be dividing them into two cohorts, and that cohort will attend in-person instruction together two days a week. They'll participate in online learning two days a week together. And that fifth day on the week will be rotating between their online learning or in-person instruction. We will be doing an alpha switch, you know, split to develop those two cohorts. And we are prioritizing siblings attending on the same day. So that's not just siblings living in the same school, that's also a coordination between our middle schools and our high schools, making sure that siblings aren't attending on the same days, making that better for families. You can also see here some notes about what that student learning experience looks like. And so this is going to follow really the ideals of a blended learning model. So when students are in-person with us, we prioritize what's important for them to learn when they're with us in-person with an instructor. And then we are putting a priority and being very careful around what that online learning experience looks like when they are working. It's going to have to be asynchronously. They're working at home asynchronously, and it's going to have to be five o'clock hours. That is a change with ISB's new guidance. You may remember this spring, they really have reduced that number of hours of learning time each day for students. That has gone up to five o'clock hours on a daily basis. And the hybrid model will work well for middle school and high school because each of those students will have a district device that they can bring to and from school. The other plan is we put a lot of time on.
Melissa, I have one quick question. Can we, for folks who are familiar, redefine synchronous, asynchronous again, please?
Absolutely. And I will also turn your attention to page 15 or the last slide of our presentation. We do some of that educational terminology that is included in here. So asynchronous learning is learning that is not timed back. And so students aren't able to do that at their own pace. And so in making a recorded video that a teacher has prepared, it may be reading or other content. Synchronous instruction is that live teaching that would be happening. Thanks so much. Good question.
Can I clarify the P E model? Does that mean students would go Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday, the following week, and then Monday, Wednesday, Friday? Just for clarity, people who might be listening?
Absolutely. So we are actually still finalizing the exact days where students would be attending, but we are preferring a set number of days and with the altering, altering. So it could be a Tuesday, Thursday for one cohort, a Wednesday, Friday for another cohort, and then alternating one day. So we're working with our students and teachers to really finalize what the best combination is. But it would entail a day on and a day off.
I have one question. You know, on the elementary level, we have again, you know, in-class learning, just coming in directly kind of working in the past. Class sizes are small, which is, you know, maybe that's one, you know, I mean, maybe that was something we'd strived to do in the past. Now we're going to do that. I mean, first off, why haven't we done in the past, because we feel? And then secondarily, we have enough space to do it. But then I can go on to the next one. Why is middle school different than elementary? I mean, you know, if we're going to do that, is it a safety issue? Is it a space issue? You know, I don't quite understand why that's critical. You know, so you raise the space, you know?
So just to go back to the elementary piece, so question one, first of all, a few questions here was, um, elementary class size, right? Yeah, so one, yes, we're going to work to lower some of our class sizes based upon the space capacities that our classrooms will hold so that we can physically distance within the room. So there is that opportunity as we want to lower those class thresholds, but certainly we're going to have to look at creative in how we staff that. So I guess the one piece is that as we look to reduce, it's not across the board, it's in certain situations where we want to make the classrooms safe and that we're allowing for our teachers to have a six-foot physical distancing space. And the majority of our student desks have that physical distancing as well. That leads into the second piece though, of the question around the ability to do an AP of elementary as opposed to middle and high school.
Particularly middle school, I guess.
Yeah, I think so the first place that I would start is cohort management. And our elementary students are in one classroom with one teacher. So that's the first piece is that they are in the classroom for the majority of the day. Now they are moving at times, possibly to a PE. They could be going possibly outside with recess in their same class, or same group of students. So that cohort management, if there was a positive COVID case, the quarantine process could be much more limited and we can still operate school. With students moving in a middle and high school model to whole rooms, a positive COVID case could potentially put us in a position where there is really a quarantine of many more students than could possibly be exposed because of the movement to multiple subjects. So that's one layer to the piece of being able to open up. The second piece is the group of students is also a question too. So we have limitations on 50 students in the building. So when you consider some of the larger, or in a given space, some of the larger logistics that we're managing, lunch being one of them, and a few of the other pieces, easier to manage and still a challenge at the elementary level that we're working through. On how you have lunch in smaller groups, how we're basing it on smaller groups. And then the challenge at the middle of high school when you're dealing with anywhere from 700 to 2,000 students. And so I hope I get to the root of it. I don't know if I can solve any other pieces of it.
We can't move, in middle school, there's not enough consistency with students going from math and then to, you know, another course. I mean, they're separating, going different directions.
But it's harder than it's hard, which is class size, right? To get kids into the classroom and have that appropriate distance, what you have to do in terms of trying to reduce class size, you can do it at the elementary schools, can't do that at the middle and high school, right? It just, you would significantly compromise the, in large part, you have to significantly compromise the scheduling and educational model in order to try to restructure it in a way that would get those reduced cohorts together.
Question. Is there any, is there any consideration of having middle school or middle high school? I guess middle school kids not move around quite as much? So that every hour of the day, we're not moving so long?
Yeah, yeah, fair question. Yeah, I guess, yes, there's a shortage for that, right? But that's a different model of scheduling, right? So that model of scheduling, not only is like rotating the adults to where the kids are is almost the easy part, but in your middle and your high school model, you don't have a count of cohorts of students that simply travel across every class. Part of that's based on a choice that sits in the schedule and what students are able to take. So to move them into cohort, you would have to significantly reduce that choice option, thus forcing kids really more into like an elementary model. thus forcing kids really more into like an elementary model, right? Even if teachers moved, it's more of an elementary model than a middle school model. And that's the, you know, so the challenge in it in terms of uncertainty also then comes to this question of how long will we be in this model, right? Will we be in it for an entire year? And if we're not, if at some point we do arrive at phase five where we can resume what might be the more normal operations, what scheduling model or program do you still want to have in tact, right? The program we've designed, right? Then that's a lot of what helped in that decision.
Chris, you mentioned quarantine in middle school. And so I'm just throwing out, you know, what happens if a first-period student stays in science class, we find out and test positive three days later? In terms of, you know, and then there's been seven, eight classes that have gone through that classroom that day? What are the consequences?
We would not have an issue with the classroom itself, right? In terms of the physical space, of course, they have four elements to be then inside each of the classrooms that that student has been in. In what situation was that student inside of a six-foot physical distance of another student for a sustained window of time, right? So the common question that goes from that is, well, what about passing period, right? When they leave, close to contact is determined as inside of six feet physical distance for a period of at least 15 minutes. So if you're sitting in a classroom, I'm inside of six feet from Brad, and either Brad or I, right, later diagnosed as positive, the other individual is going to be excluded or quarantined. Now, exponentially at a middle or high school, think about all of these students that may be inside of that six-foot distance, depending on how many kids are in that classroom and how many situations are compromised by six feet, and then trace through the rest of the periods and the rest of their days, and you see where that issue can just exponentially grow at the secondary level, right? Whereas, again, like back to the cohort piece, if one other student is impacted, obviously that student is impacted, right? Not potentially 50, 60, 70 students across the day.
I have one other basic question, and that's what if, you know, we have, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about masking over, you know, all the exams we've got. You know, there's, becomes the enforcement issue. And if we have a student or, you know, supported by their parents and saying that, you know, we're not, you know, you're not going to mask, what do you want?
So there will be some situations that we have to talk through, right? That could tie into legitimate concerns, right? That somebody may have, and we'll work through an accommodation plan that we need to. But bottom line is, it's not true. So if a student is not wearing a mask, we would guide that student. If ultimately, could engage the parent in support of the need to wear a mask, we would guide that student to a longer.
What about students that need and can't?
Yeah, so those students, that would be an accommodation plan for that individual student where we would have to look at what is the, what is the safe way that an accommodation could be built.
First, state law would require to offer remote learning to someone who does not want to attend in person?
No, not required to offer that.
But we're offering it.
They're offering. Let's see, want to keep going?
Okay, we're moving into the next plan that we have been preparing for. And that is around making that seamless transition to into e-learning. So it's very possible we may have to move back to e-learning at some point. And so at our last meeting, we talked about the feedbacks we received. We have a team of teachers that has been partnering with us to have conversations about what we can do so that we are better prepared. And so you're going to see an outline here of the things we have identified in two different boxes. The first box is for our middle school and high school students in a hybrid model. You're going to see there's not a lot of bullets there because half of their time will be in an e-learning situation. So that transition will be pretty seamless. The noted changes that we've identified is that instead of being in-person instruction, they would be offered what would be synchronous learning, which means that the teacher would offer, you know, opportunities through Google Meet or Zoom to work with students. And we also identified we need to have a structured schedule there so we can put together times that follow pretty much like a bell schedule so that we wouldn't have overlapping meetings. The other thing to note here is our students will be even more familiar with technology tools because they would be utilizing them in class on a daily basis. Where there are more changes are at our elementary level. So you'll notice a lot of the items here that the team has identified as on the work plan. First and foremost, we've identified that it's going to be very important for our families of our youngest students to have a really good sense of what that day will look like. And so our building principals will be working to develop a building-wide schedule that would be distributed to caregivers, giving them a good sense of what an e-learning day will look like. We feel this is very important because of Isbe's new requirement of five hours of daily learning activities. So we want families to really know what that day will look like in advance. We also know that we want to prioritize reading and math instruction. So every student would receive daily live or synchronous instruction in those two areas. We're also developing a distance learning family profile. And so this will allow us to get a good sense of what the home environment would be like so that we can really increase that homeschool connection and working with our families so that we have a good sense of how we can make that a successful experience. I should note, our, the group that we work with, EAB, is actually partnering with District 200 and receiving feedback from us on that distance learning profile that they put in draft form and are seeking our feedback on that. We also will remember at our last meeting, the board approved several new digital tools at our elementary level. And so those would be familiar tools for our elementary students. And those are in reading and math, you have science. And then we're going to be using one platform for communication and distribution of learning assignments. That's Google Classroom. So every student, even down in DC, will be familiar with that Google Classroom. And then we also would have a district providing program. Now, moving into the last part of our plan is what is e-learning by family choice. And this is, we're calling this our virtual academy. So this is, this is designed for our families who would like to continue to access the District 200 learning experience but don't feel comfortable returning to school. You're going to see here a program overview. This would be a district-wide program, not a school-specific program. And what I mean by that is it could have a student from Franklin, a student from Edison, a student from Monroe. They all may be a part of a teacher's caseload. This would be supported by our District 200 teachers that may not be teaching in person in the hybrid model, or they may just express an interest in being part of that classroom, you know, that virtual academy. We are asking that families would make a trimester-long commitment at our elementary level or a semester-long commitment at our middle school and high school. And this is very important due to the conversations we just had about space considerations in our classrooms. And the last piece would be, we want to be very clear about what that learning experience will be. So we're in the process of developing an online agreement which would outline what students would be doing, what parents would be doing, and then what teachers would be doing. To give you a little bit of overview of what that student learning experience would look like, it will be allow all students to have a device. We are developing, it'll have a combination of district-created content, and we're also looking at purchase online content. A reminder, even in the virtual academy, Isbe is requiring us to have five hours of daily learning. And finally, we know it's going to be really important that these students don't feel isolated. We are going to prioritize that whole idea of grab our own services such as social work, counseling, and related services that they need.
Was I going to ask a question? So we talked about supported by District 200 teachers not teaching in person. Is this an opportunity, you know, a concern that I have, our staff members that have maybe some underlying health problems that are now sitting in a situation of what am I going to do? Are we going to offer these opportunities to them first?
I don't think that's a good question for Dr. Caddell.
Chair, HR, yes, we would offer those opportunities to teachers who have underlying health conditions, perfect.
I have a question. Did you, am I remembering? You said that after this presentation, this later this week, this year, they will grow up to teachers? Get feedback on that, and so is that the kind of question you would be asking?
Yes, yes, as I said, we do intend to ask our teachers by the end of the week a couple of important questions that will help the staff. Obviously, one of those being identifying situations like Chris has asked teachers that would have, based on an underlying health condition or a concern, concern with returning to in-person instruction, that'll help us to guide that department for our, guide that discussion through our human resources department so that we can start to make that match. But also asking the second part of my question, which is, how many teachers will need will be largely dependent by how many students sign up for that option versus in-person? And so we may need additional teachers for that. And if that's the case, we want to know what other teachers would just be interested by choice in that. And I think the last part for that is that we also want to understand what additional concerns our staff continue to have. That helps us as we're developing protocols or collaborating with teachers to develop protocols, answer questions, put training opportunities in place. I want to say clearly that we don't have every detail and every, every plan I have. There's still a lot of work to be done as we implement some of these opportunities. And so we will continue to draw on and need staff help and engagement as we finalize this.
And lastly, here in terms of the student learning component, as Dr. Schuler just mentioned, needing staff help. This is where we've had a lot of staff help. In that instructional reopening team, we have multiple teachers who have been working this summer with various administrators on components to have a really successful and high-quality student learning experience next year. And so you're going to see a list of items here that teams are working on and putting very good thought and plans in place. Those are around professional development for our teaching staff, the digital resources and the online content, intermittent e-learning enhancements. We're continuing to put plans in place there. We have teams of teachers that are identifying the essential standards and the critical content that our students need to be exposed to in the next school year. We are looking at interventions. We are looking at that in a manner of how to identify students that are going to need interventions. But we're also thinking about if we move to e-learning, how do we best deliver those interventions in that environment? Julie Oczekowski is working on new assessments to identify students for learning recovery needs. And then Dr. Saladi and teachers are working around social emotional needs and also student breaks. We're going to go more in-depth on all of these updates at the August meeting. But I wanted the board and community to know there's still a lot of work happening in that instructional space.
Thank you, Mrs. Murphy. Go for it. On to operational aspect, we have an operations committee that's moved out of here. As I was looking at meals, where else to clean, to move forward. And Dr. Schuler also mentioned earlier that gathering sizes is a limitation of 50 in space and now we see for cafeterias, that means we have no more than 50 scoops in the cafeterias that prevent problems at all levels. So we're working through that with the operational committee. We have talked about staggering these kinds of students and in the past, we've had to minimize a bunch of students going to the cafeteria at once. We anticipate students will be in the classrooms, at least at the elementary level, or just be caught with allergies, you know, food allergies, and those type of things. So which, obviously, we do now, and so we move into the classroom, a dozen day areas to address that. We also love to disinfect the air evening days after lunch is over, whether you're in the cafeteria or in the classroom before classes start again. We will not have items, you know, where students are serving their own items under a tray or if it's a bed, it's all going to have to be provided to the students by the cafeteria workers. Obviously, hygiene is important and will have to be done before and after eating meals. This is one time in fifth coverage, we'll be allowed to be moved during eating. So whenever possible, we're trying to maintain a six-foot distance between individuals while eating because the mask will be off. And then all the time, and this is really a problem, and I want to increase the issue during snack times, these same expectations will apply. Moving on to transportation, all students must wear their mask when they board the bus. Again, for no more than 50 individuals, if that means you're driving, or 40 minus students, that pretty much allows two students to a seat. We're in that parent pre-check, we have to have before students get out of the bus, the self-certification. We're going to utilize seating charts and try and adjust it to make sure we have families that students are coming from the same family, and then sitting together. Bus company, the sanitation protocols are already being put into place where the buses will be cleaned after running the morning lots and then at the end of the day. We're working through that with the bus company. And then our space available program will likely be suspended as we try and work through the transportation nuances that are going to be in front of us.
Before you go on to the next topic, a question in terms of the food service. Has there been any discussion amongst your network and the other school districts about 50, 50 students per like a lunchroom? I mean, it's so interesting, you can only have 50 kids in a bus, but you can't have more than 50 kids in a room like this. I mean, think about the six-foot social distancing. Has there been some, some attempt to try to get the, you know, the guidance to be relaxed and be a little bit more reasonable?
Yes, the answers are large, that's no, 50 in a space is 50 in a space. It doesn't matter if the space is this large or at this size. So the only thing that I've heard, or potentially that could change, is the idea of if you can have more sound dividers, like less permeable dividers, that there may be some flex on that. But as of right now, it's 50 in a space. It can't, it can't be. That changes when you go outside. So there's to move kids outside. Group sizes still have to stay at 50, but there's some guidance around multiple groups of 50 spread apart by a certain distance outside the building. But that's, that's the unfortunate challenge in, you know, a building like this, that you can physically distance kids and get a lot of them, 50 in the lunchroom, but we would not be able to as of right now.
So has there been conversations with the state about how you define a space?
Yes.
Like, I'm thinking about, we work with health, you could, you could say that it's like probably three or four different spaces without walls between them, but it's really three or four different spaces. Has there been any conversation about that?
Yeah, I mean, a short answer, yes. And the state isn't going to get into that level. that level of nuance officially defining a space, I think we would have, we'd have a little bit of local autonomy likely with the need to work with our local health department if we deem or determine that, hey, we more of a south ultimately has two spaces that are like connected or spread. When you look at the front commons and then you go around the corner to kind of the second eating area, I think you, you may be able to justify that as two separate spaces, but there's not an official definition of it yet.
I have a question about specifying that all of the kids, didn't we at some point here that we were going to be talking to the legal counsel, did you see about getting some sort of statement that parents would sign off on so that they're not, you're not asking them on a daily basis as they put their kids on the bus? I go through questions, are they going to be able to just say that they acknowledge that on a daily basis they're expected to?
I believe so, I believe so at this point, so symptom monitoring will be done by parents, certifying symptom monitoring. There's still a little bit of discussion on whether it has to be daily or be done, you know, on a, like a block of time.
Right.
And I believe that we're going to be able to do it over a block of time, where parents are certifying that if their kid is coming, they've done the symptom screening. We will obviously still need to have active health protocols for how we address and respond to students that may show up at school and then present with the, with the symptom. So we're still going to have to have those protocols in place, but, but yes, it will be through symptom monitoring or parent monitoring.
Oh, I have a question about, so all of us seems to be eating lunch in their classroom.
Very well.
Who's supervising them?
Working, working on the details around it. Some of that has still got to be worked on, but we'll go through that.
I thought it was my sense that teachers were supposed to have lunch hour.
They do, yeah, they do, and they will still have that little job.
So I think, I'm sorry, I can't let this go because it's so ridiculous. You've got 1,000 kids in a high school. This is not an argument with our administration, this is how ridiculous this, this rule is about space. 1,000 kids in a high school, that's 20 lunch periods. That's basically two, two lunch periods per class, that's 10 classes, we only have separate periods in a high school day. Kids are going to be coming to school and eating lunch. Am I doing my math right? Otherwise, you're going to have about 10 minutes to eat.
Right now, we're going to defer spaces at the high schools and middle schools where we can adjust it. So the preliminary for high schools and middle schools is developed, that's a big concern because it's either, and half the kids are coming there. So we do tend to organize spaces, and we can believe we can.
Still present kids. Yes.
There are, it's still, it's still.
There's a window of time, and I just don't remember the history, but I think before the additions were put on to the high school, there was a window of time where kids actually ate lunch always, even a week before that second cafeteria was built. So there are options that might not be ideal when we look at a space that obviously was designed as a lunchroom, but I believe there are options, right? We have, we have pretty big field houses, we've got some other spaces that utilize it.
Hopefully, that's one of these things that's going to change.
I think, just, this is the first time we've gone through this, right? There's so much more to figure out, right? I think, secondly, we can plan all we want, but there's going to be unforeseen circumstances. And I think we all have to remember, we need to be agile, we need to be patient, and we'll figure it out, right? And not that we need all of it figured out, but there's going to be something that comes up, and we're just going to have to figure it out at that point in time. So I, you know, I understand as people are listing and can have 1,000 questions, the criticality of it, but at the same time, I would just caution everyone in the public to just, we're going to, we're going to get through it, we're going to get through it together, and we're going to figure it out together. I, you know, just, the complexities of this are enormous, and I obviously have questions for Agnes, right? I'm like, uh-huh, you're going to do this? I'm like, well, we're going to figure it out. And so I'm just going, I'm coming back to a guiding principle of, we're in this together, we're going to have to adapt, figure it out. We're going to plan the best we can and use patience, communication, all of which we do very well. So I really, you know, this is a great plan, and it's a great start, and I just, you know, we're not through it yet, obviously, we've got to finish the presentation, but just good stuff.
Moving on to the safety, the mechanical systems, HPC system. Obviously, we're relying on practices with the state and local health departments as well as the state for education, promoting hand washing, you hear that over and over again, washing hands is so critical. And ensure that all students and staff that have ongoing accommodations, if there's any sensitivities to soap or sanitizer we're going to use. Desk will be cleaned often as much as they can, as stated. We'll post and monitor the restrooms to make sure that students gather in there. We're not going to have items in our schools that are difficult to clean, some of the things that we know in classrooms will have to involve just for space reasons as well as cleaning issues. We're going to have regularly disinfecting our washrooms, high-touch areas, obviously critical to address those areas and get those areas cleaned as much as possible. We are going to have hand sanitizers, JR is ordering up hand sanitizers for every classroom and space in schools and common spaces as well, so we'll have those throughout this, throughout the district. We're going to use EPA approved disinfectant products, I know there's a lot of information out there about all the different kinds of cleaning products that are sanitized and not many exciting stuff, and we're going to make sure we're within those EPA guidelines. You know, talk a little bit on contingency, additional cleaning staff and training of all staff will be implemented throughout the district to make sure we're using cleaning practices, and enhanced cleaning products also will be purchased as different things. JR, I've been looking at as far as different cleaning tools that do a better job, just ones we're using now to try and improve the cleaning areas. Comes to mechanical system, we're going to be doing a complete air conditioning for staff and students return. We're going to be operating our systems, everything will be fully operational at the volume, so that means air filters on the air conditioner to make sure the airflow is appropriate. We're going to expand our HPC schedule, and those are probably per town a little bit because it makes it be efficient, but we're going to extend when systems start and when they turn off. So we're running longer, we're going to introduce as much outside air as we can to maximize the pollution of air. You know, it is a little bit tougher when it's hot even, and it's a little tougher when it's very cold outside, if you have more colder air to bring in. You can freeze up systems and stuff like that, so it'll be a tricky system. We'll have to monitor, but we'll try and do that. We're going to look to increase our filtration efficiencies, checking filters, cleaning filters, look at a different filter we can use on our systems to try and improve how those systems operate, and then as much as possible, allow windows be open to allow fresh air to be built as well. When it comes to our water systems, each school has at least one touchless water bottle filler, a lot of schools have more than one, we're going to be looking to add new stations throughout. And then our recommended columns required right now is that we have to clean it after every use, which we find to be probably very difficult to do, so we may be shutting down some of the water columns in the schools that don't have that touchless feature.
So I think we all realize that communicating out these plans, many of us have been working on this, these plans for months now, still have many questions. And so we know, very much so, that our community is going to have lots of questions in our staff. And so I'm very happy to share that we've been very lucky that on our communications and community engagement subcommittees that we have representatives, not only from our teaching staff, our support staff, but also our key community partners who we know engage regularly with our families, help provide academic support. So we have representatives from Outreach Community Center in Carroll Street, WYFS, Morale and Family Services, World Belief, and the People's Resource Center on that subcommittee, and they are really committed to helping us communicate our plans with our families. We know that for a lot of our families, simply sending a written document with plans home is not an effective method of communication. And so our community partners are really ready and waiting to help us share the plans out with families and ensure that all of the families understand the choices that they have for the coming school year, and can get, we'll talk about in a minute, register and ready for the start of the 2021 school year. So one thing, one of the best practices in communications when you're pushing on a big plan like this is to establish a central point of communication, meaning where to accept questions. That allows us to, a couple things, one, to develop some frequently asked question documents, we've started one for staff and for community, so that we can see what are those commonly asked questions, but then also make sure that those questions are answered in a consistent and uniform manner, but then also they get pushed to the right people to help us answer those questions. And so those emails will come to my inbox, and I will push them out and or add them to frequently asked questions document. We are finalizing a district reopening plan document that not only covers what you've seen here tonight, but also much deeper details around, around procedures and practices by level and by plan. And so, and pushed out with our communication sometime tomorrow, reopening plan document that will have a table of contents, literally defined headers, so that the information is more digestible, consumable, but that, so staff and families can have that, it's almost like a reference that they can flip to to find the specific information that they're looking for. And then one of the things that came out of that community even subcommittee was that there's an understanding that there's a lot of uncertainty because we won't be able to have visitors, parents, large gatherings, back-to-school socials, back-to-school events, we won't be able to have those this year. There's a lot of anticipation and curiosity, maybe even some anxiety among our families. Well, what does the inside of the school actually look like? And so we'll work with principals to develop the rural school tours, where maybe we, with video, walk around parts of the school, maybe show the, for the elementary, inside a couple of the classrooms, how does physical distancing look like in an elementary classroom? Knowing full well that not all of them will look exactly the same in the middle and high schools, what do those lunchroom spaces look like? What does it look like if students eat lunch during the day? Just to help feed that curiosity and ease some anxiety and anger of our families. Breaking it out between our staff and our family communication plan, so on July 6th, we did post out on our social media a notification that this board meeting would be live streamed, so the families, staff and families could see, see the presentation in real time. Dr. Schuler sent an email to staff, again notifying them about tonight's live stream, but then, so tomorrow at 9:00, 11:00, and 3:00 PM, we will have optional staff Zoom meetings for staff to join by level, so in the morning, we'll have early chat with elementary. And then at 11 o'clock, we'll invite our middle school staff to participate, and then at 3 o'clock, our high school and our transition staff to participate in that optional Zoom meeting. We will record each one of those Q and A sessions with our staff, and then make them available to our staff if they were not able to participate in that Q and A session. Tomorrow, our board highlights note will really focus on two key areas. The second, which I'll get into in a minute, summarizing these reopening plans with links back to this meeting video, link to the slides, and then also link to that final reopening document that we're talking about right now. And then we know that, again, as we've talked about, how many questions our staff, we've already seen that our staff had, and those are the people that have been working on these plans for months now, we are going to have some future Zoom meetings with our staff to get those questions answered before the school year starts. Whether those Zoom meetings are via level again, or they are Zoom meetings by individual school, are yet to be determined, but we know we will have those in the future. Just so that we can ensure that our staff are really feeling as prepared as possible for the start of the school year. Our family communication plan, so the board highlights email tomorrow, like I said, will summarize the reopening plans, provide links back to various documents, but tomorrow we will officially open registration for the 2021 school year. That registration, I'll get to this in a minute, will look a little different than the year prior because we will be asking families a few additional questions in addition to the typical things that they would do as part of the registration process. Later this month, we will send an email to families with an invitation, just a reminder or another summary about the reopening plans, and an invitation for the community to participate in a Zoom meeting on July 20th at 7:00 PM for a Q and A, and also put a registration reminder, and then another registration reminder later in July, also asking our principals to help us in that communication process. And also, again, going back to, we are really going to have to heavily rely on our community partners to help us get families registered, maybe don't have internet at home. We've worked with families during the learning to help them get internet access, but we still know that some of them may not have that access at home, there might be language barriers. Typically, our key community partners help our families with the registration process anyway, and so it will be a little more challenging to do that this year, but thanks to Julie Oczekowski, who's going to help us track families who have, who have not registered yet, so we can start doing outreach to them, and also work with our community partners to reach out to those stakeholders as well. So as I mentioned, registration for the, for next school year will open tomorrow, once that email goes out. It may not be until later in the day, we're still finalizing a couple of last items, but we will ask families to complete that registration process, and sorry, it's not on this slide, but will be included in the communication tomorrow. Chris, could you roll? Yeah, thanks. We will ask families to register for this 2021 school year by July 24th, just so that we have a better sooner rather than later, have an understanding of what our enrollment will look like, so that Charlie and his team can work on making sure we're staffing appropriately. And so we will, as part of the registration process this year, ask families three key questions, and then before they get to the point where they can confirm contact information, emergency contacts, confirm a couple of other student permission and details and things like that, we will ask them three questions. Does your family have access to the internet at home? So that we can determine what families we may need to assist, just in the event that we do need to move to the e-learning environment, do Plan C, or families do elect to replace Plan D, which is the virtual academy? We want to be able to support those families and give them access to internet. Second question, we'll ask them, is Apple seeing the current plan? The current plan to reopen schools in August, what are your intentions? Do you plan to send your child based on level to the plans laid out? Do you plan to access the virtual academy? Or do you not plan to enroll your children in District 200 schools next year? And then the third question, so that our schools can work on bus routes, schools in our transportation department work on bus routes, we will ask, if your child is eligible for transportation services, do you intend to use them in the next school year? And then at the end of the presentation, you'll see, and this will be included in the final reopening document, just some key definitions that are referenced in our plans that are definitely not common to people who don't live in the education space.
Dr. Schuler, any final comments or questions for board members?
Yeah, no, I don't have, I think, final comments other than to say, we recognize going into this tonight, we've had a lot of feedback leading up to this plan. So it was going to be impossible to develop a plan that likely is going to meet everybody's expectations in terms of perhaps what they're, they're hoping for. Again, we continue throughout, we do very best we can to provide an experience to as many kids in school as possible, and again, continue to understand that, I think Rob really, really said it best, that this is a work in progress, and we're going to continue to work together to get detailed to work together to get details figured out. I think we've got, we've certainly got some work in front of us, some questions already identified ahead, we're going to collaborate with our teachers and staff and leaders to finalize a good plan to the place, but we're in this together and we're going to make very best of a good plan we presented.
Any other questions? So two things I noticed that never mentioned, VAS, we look at VAS, going after school work, is that what it is? And curriculars, you talked a little bit about IHSA and Phase Two in terms of practicing athletics, just that, like there's more to our curriculars than there are athletics. And, you know, how is that fitting into the plan? And even going back to athletics, you know, what, what does football season look like in terms of spectators? And, you know, I know our booster clubs are so heavily reliant on these activities to be able to provide, I mean, there's so many pieces, and I understand, this is the first time, I mean, today is the first time even the board is really kind of digging into all of this, and we're going to continue to have lots of, lots of questions, but are, what are, do we have a team up there that's looking at that curricular piece as well?
Yes, we do. So the intention is still to run before an after-school opportunity, some of those details are going to have to be worked through. Dr. Slakke is working with the team on that. The athletic activities question, we have a middle school team that is forming to look at, at the opportunities at the middle school, talk about that high school, too, frequently a lot of that is going to be determined in the athletics space by what some of the decisions are that IHSA does make in terms of opportunities and that organization. So I cannot tell you definitively what contests potentially look like or spectators of those pieces, but we have a team that, again, is going to, going to be ready to, to put that in place and certainly has talked about the fact that even if activities have to shift a little bit, that we can create opportunities. I remember you saw this summer that we had teachers that came together and created some virtual opportunities, right, thought outside the box and, and created opportunities to still capture that student engagement and the relationship piece that comes from, from that. So I, I don't know all those details for you in terms of exactly how athletics and that activities are going to look, but we've got a team.
So before, I know Rob has a question. Before that, you know, there's a lot of questions to be answered yet, so our next meeting is not until August, well, five days before school starts, so there's going to be a lot uncovered over the next couple of weeks. We don't have to be the lone July schedule, we never do, but I would like to propose to the board that you, we kind of put a placeholder on July 29th as, as kind of an update of this plan, you know, what feedback do we get? What's registration? That's July 24th, registration will be figured out. I think it will be prudent for us to, you know, have another conversation here as a board, just focus on reopening so that we can share more with the community. It's just a thought, I just picked July 29th because it's a Wednesday, it's a couple more weeks out, and we have a lot that's going to be able to figure out and probably more guidance and changes to the guidance that come off of this day. So if anybody has any issues with July 29th, we'll just kind of put a pin in it for now. But it's a thought. Rob, do you have questions or comments?
Comments? Just some items that we did talk about yet, and we don't have to answer it tonight, but just, communication plan or communication calls, you know, identify positives in the school, because social media will run with it, right? And secondly is going to one-to-one device, especially in a home situation, I think Rob's office is going to face a lot of high volume calls or connected questions, more than we've probably experienced in, even in the fall or in the spring, right? Some of the, you know, how we handle that capacity. And then I'm really happy to hear that the social emotional components of our, our education are getting focused even during this time, right? The connectedness we've been talking about is huge, and, you know, kids can feel just so isolated, you know, I guess that looks fantastic, so thank you for doing that. That's all.
I've got a couple of ideas that I'd like to touch on, and kind of follow from what Rob was talking about a little earlier. You know, I think that, you know, we, we have a different plan than other school districts. I've heard and I've seen a lot of emails that have come to us and comments tonight and so on, that, that the, you know, we're doing something different than others. And I, you know what? That's the greatest thing that's happened, because we're going to all learn from what others do. And, you know, I think, you know, we've talked about masks are optional, and there's organizations that say masks help and masks don't help and so on, but, you know, at the end of the day, in the next number of months, we're going to find out, maybe short a period of time, that this is right or wrong. And I don't want to, I don't want to take that chance, even if we had that opportunity, to be the one that proved the mask should have been there. And I think there are districts that'll happen now. As far as social distancing, you know, every district that, you know, has talked about different ways to approach this, you know, they have different circumstances. You know, we, you know, I saw one email about a little district in Southern Illinois, you know, that's a whole different set of circumstances that we have. So, you know, we, we have to work with what we can. And, you know, we talked about maximizing the time in school. You know, the most wonderful group we have is the younger kids, and they, you know, we're going to get them in school, and that's, that's really critical. And, you know, I think that, you know, dealing with the middle school and high school, you know, we've kind of addressed why we can't be out with them. And so, you know, I think on our, we're going to learn from what happens, and we're going to adjust to it. Maybe in two weeks, that will be, well, no masks and so on. So, but again, I think we're taking the proper guidance approach. I don't think we can do anything else in this area. So, you know, I think this is really, I'm, I'm really impressed at all the things we've talked about tonight, and all the things we've considered. So, you know, I'm, I'm real pleased with it, and we'll roll with the punches as they come up. You know, and again, I'm sure social media, as you referred to, is going to take a lot of different comments, but you know what? There's only one thing that we can be as, as cool as we're on, and we'll adapt to it. So that's the thing I look forward to. It's my comment.
Yeah, a couple of things, actually, on this. The transition center, is that special education?
Yes.
Okay. And for special ed in, in middle school and high school, are they going to be on the hybrid schedule as well, or are we looking at a different potential?
Yeah, there was, actually, I think the slide, it's talk about the hybrid model, there was mentioned the fact that there are some students that will be prioritized to get in the structure.
Okay, okay. Will there be ACE in elementary school? Okay, just because I know that requires some room. And then grade management, there was a bit of an issue where, not, not an issue, but kids' grade could not go down one way to E. Is grading going to be more traditional, no matter what we do?
Exactly.
So if you go to a full e-learning, it's still going to be traditional grade. Grade will happen as it would in the, in the classroom, and that, and I think, you know, experience is a good example, we've given, like, we've had ELO classes for a while, right? And, and our, our ELO classes at the high school, fully online classes, don't operate with a different grading system than our class. So yes, that, that expectation will remain. And then the last thing is just more for understanding. I mean, I agree with what Rob and Jim said, you know, I believe we're doing the right things and all that, but the, we get a lot of emails, a lot of different opinions, we're not going to make everybody happy. I struggle a little bit with what's the difference between guidance requirements? How much flexibility do we have? And, you know, I, I get the feeling that some community members from some of the communities would think we have more flexibility than we do. But how do we determine what's the difference between a requirement? Like, I get the sense that a mask is almost like law in terms of the school. So what, but where is that? And, and then, I know there's also different layers, right? You've got the state, and then you've got the county, so maybe if we just elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, so, I'm, I'm distracted a bit by the, I think, I think we've got some areas outside the building. So.
My first protest.
The, the guidance, so, so I guess one depends on how guidance is written. So there are guidance documents that clearly identify who you and you have space to make choice, right, within arrangement guidance, and there's some guidance that definitively says this is the expectation. When it says this is the expectation, you have to follow it. Well, we put at risk when we don't follow that, especially when it's guidance out of state, is we put funding at risk, and then candidly, we put the district, your district, at risk when we clearly choose not to follow guidance, and then you have an exposure, right? If you have an exposure, if someone gets sick, you have an exposure. If, if we've not followed what is correctly right. So I think those, those are the, the two elements to it. So again, in the document, it's pretty clear in the, in the state guidance where we have space to operate and make decisions, and those areas where it's just a non-negotiable mask requirement.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions?
I have questions about communication and feedback, and a question that Rob raised, which is about communication, community with people, if there is an occurrence of disease, and I, I would just want caution us to be very sensitive to, there is a difference between what we must tell people, sort of that need to know stuff versus what we, we should be aware that people really will want to know. So I know that, especially with, with this disease, in a lot of settings, you have to be very careful about preserving people's privacy. But I could imagine a parent feeling like it was completely within their rights to know if there had been an outbreak in the classroom, whether or not we determined that it was a child that directly impacted their child. So, and it will help keep things out of the river mill, so not with the social media to some extent, if we can be very, very transparent, that at least some people know if there's been anything anywhere near, you know, one of their students.
Yeah, so, the question of feedback, is there?
I was saying, I want us to be sensitive to making sure that we're not making decisions based on what we believe is just as strictly a need to know thing, because sometimes that's, it's off-putting, you know? Because people want to understand what's going on, whether we think they need to know it or not, that it needs, it's just a, that's what we're going to do.
Okay. I would like to get on the next discussion item. Anybody has any final quick questions?
I just wanted to just make a quick comment as a city board member on the committee that, and also for those watching, I am a parent in a district, I am a seventh grader and will be a freshman. And I can, I think it's important to say, I mean, I, I'd say 95% of the time I'm either a board member, but I'm not going to say I didn't sneak in a parent question here and there, it's hard on that too. But it's just, I just wanted to say, this is an incredibly complex situation, and to see 25 people come together once a week, which I know there's always smaller committees that are working very hard between those weeks, that I, I just, I, as a parent, feel very comfortable with all of the different scenarios that this group is exploring, and I really feel, I mean, as Rob said, there, there's stuff we can't predict, and I'm sure you said that too, I mean, we, but the breadth and width of things that we have covered in that meeting and things that come up, I, it was very, very rare that somebody had not thought of it, you know, that, yes, we're aware that that situation could arrive, or we need to look at this, or whatever. So I just wanted to make that comment, that it has, it has been a very complex and very impressive undertaking by our district, and, you know, thank you, Dr. Schuler, for your leadership there. And I, I just wanted to say that, both as a board member, but also as a parent.
Okay. Let's get on to the next discussion item, which is also a meaty subject. Discussion item number two is around equity of proactive practices and the presentation of our work plan, and discussion of board education equity statement, Dr. Schuler.
Yeah, and so this is actually not, not really so much a presentation, the board will remember at your last meeting, we did go through a presentation on the, the equity plan or proactive practices plan, and identify within each of the areas of consideration some action steps. And so our goal was to bring back to you tonight, an actual work plan that identified all of the commitments that we made. At the top of the, of the work plan in that red box, you will see a draft of, of an equity statement. And, and so I will, I think, we, we worked with board officers to review an option for a statement, and so this could be tweaked if there are thoughts or, or modifications that you might, might want to make to it. But we looked at some other equity statements that districts had, had considered or were working on, and really used that as the, the foundation for, for building that into, into that equity statement. Again, I don't think there's anything, as you move down through, so the work plan is organized by area, kind of a broad goal within the area, again, identified, and then a couple of the specific action steps. So under professional learning, clearly the broad goal is to make sure that we're developing staff awareness and knowledge around implicit bias, and how implicit bias includes behavior or action. And then you see the two very specific action steps, the partnership with Dr. Howard, that's taking place in November, where we're bringing teams together from each of our buildings to do kind of the train, the trainer of the, of the implicit bias training, the teams from buildings and all of our, our administrative team, and then the trauma and form piece. So I'm not going to walk you back through each of these, because it really would be a repetition of, I think, what you saw at the, at the last meeting, but really two kind of open areas for, for feedback. One is the equity, equity statement itself at the top, and then two, just from an accountability perspective, do you want to assign a specific board committee to oversee this work plan? You want to assign one of your existing committees? Last year, you created kind of a new adjunct committee around SEL, as that was the, the focus, you could certainly use the same approach around this, but I, I do think that accountability is, is important because this work crosses several departments to, to really make sure that that accountability structure is there.
So are you suggesting a, a short-term committee to look at the whole thing, or are you looking to divide it up among the different areas?
Really looking for feedback on how the board felt that would be, would be best managed. I think in, in terms of monitoring the equity plan as a plan, it would probably be better if there's one, one accountability umbrella to them. And again, that could be a, a short-term committee specifically focused on that, or the board could say, you know, assign one of your existing committees to be that umbrella, or assign your teaching and learning committee, or your SEL committee, like, like you would let that, that's really kind of up to you. I just think it's important to have that, that accountability structure. My advice would be have one committee oversee the entire plan, that will never lose sight of, of, of the work and the accountability around it.
You're saying, you're saying you have a new committee? I agree, I, I agree, I think it gives a better focus on the issue, and, and it kind of gives assurance that we're giving that focus to it, so I, I would suggest that we do that.
And the committee versus one of the other current committees, what key points? Like, like, like you said, social, emotional?
It was SEL, right? SEL was your priority, I mean, was, not your priority, but it was a key priority right in the last year, make this the priority, assign a committee to, to oversee.
And still keep that deal?
I, I think it's important enough, issue that we should have a committee dedicated to it, that it just, it's something that needs that attention, and deserves that attention, and it's a very positive signal to the entire committee that we're committed. Now, second point, I didn't, when I read this, you know, pre-read, I didn't, this is an act, this is a statement, and what are we going to do with this statement?
What's that?
What's the intent? I just thought it was an intro to the sheet, so am I reading too much into what a statement is with the board? Is it a declaration? Is it a?
Commitment?
Yeah, what is it? I mean, is it, how should I, what's the context of that? What should I do with that? Is it published? Is it, I don't know, I don't, not sure how to react to it, because I just, I'm just absorbing the fact that it's a formal statement.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, Rob, actually, when you described it, the, the best in a way that, that I think if you read- that, that I think if you read it really as the umbrella statement that sits on top of the action statements that, that are ever-evolving, right? Like, at the end of the day, what we want to accomplish is what's in the red, right? We want to make sure that our, our programs, our practices in the, the district provide equitable opportunity, and that we ensure that, that all students have equitable opportunity to, to programs and services, and that we govern, right, through that. So I think it is the, I think it is the umbrella that sits on top of all of what you see in the, in the plan. I think the action steps will continue to change and evolve. Over time, as new needs are identified or, or emerge, I, I don't think that that statement likely changes, right? That becomes a beacon for how you, how you look at it.
Right, right, right. Yeah, I just didn't, when I was reading the pre-read, I didn't read it as a text statement. So again, I'm reading it again now. Just one comment, I love that the center of the sentence, that's my first reaction to it. Almost every sentence is always done a student. Thanks. I think that's it.
So this is something that we post on our website in a prominent position, and call attention to the fact that we have made an intentional statement to acknowledge that this is one of our priorities.
Yeah, I, I would think that, that you would with, right now, with this entire work plan, right? I think that, you know, each year, as the, the boards identified priorities or work plans, we've always called them out and made sure that they are very publicly available, aware, right, or that there's awareness with that. I think in conversation with, you know, Brad earlier, I think an offshoot of the equity statement as well, is that you have a statement of beliefs on your website as well, that coincide with your mission and vision. And I think we ought to, we ought to take a look at that statement of beliefs, and perhaps a smaller portion of this finds its way into your belief statements as well, right, which I think would be, would be very important, so.
Yeah, this, I think there's, you know, a variety of issues here. You know, the whole idea of the committee, love that idea. This document, how we, how we connect it into some other things on our website. That might be, all these things, you know, the conversation with the community group that's forming outside, all of, all those things kind of tie together into a bigger initiative. This is just kind of like the internal portion of this. So I think the idea of creating a dedicated board committee makes a lot of sense, and to kind of guide all that and report back to the board. You know, just real quickly to Rob's question about the text in the red, I was, I was reading this as like the introduction to this work plan.
Right.
Not necessarily a statement that we would put out on our website, or put out on social media, just because everybody else is doing it right now.
Right.
That's kind of the way I was reading this. What I'm hoping, other points of feedback.
I think that's a good point. I, I just want to point out too, that if we stick with this, or, you know, push it around a little bit, that we include gender identity in the statement as well. We say gender and sexual orientation, but there's no mention of gender identity that I think is important to include. I, Brad and I were talking, we had a breakfast today, and Brad, I give it to you, Brad made a point about, could it be a little more bold, you know, about what we're really trying to accomplish here? You know, that it's, I don't want to say it's vague, but I think we could be a little bit more bold about what we're really going after here with equity, and, you know, really calling out race, and xenophobia, and discrimination, and that type of thing. To be a little more bold with it, just an idea. Yeah, so that's sort of my reaction to the, the statement, depending on what we do with it, so.
So just, just based on short commentary, if we're, if we're going to use it as a more of a beacon versus a, just a header for an idea, I think it might need, we might need to add a little more discussion. That'd be my feedback.
I agree.
But I love, I love the direction, the intention. I think it's fantastic. I just want to exercise something here a little bit in my head, probably declare it as a...
Yeah, and then certainly, from the point, and the intent was to arrive at the answer tonight, but to kind of put that piece out, right, as the, the next thing to think about. One more thing I just want to call your attention to very quickly, actually, just two, two other elements. Flip to the back, family and community engagement. So again, you see for each of the areas, a member of senior leadership team that's kind of been assigned as the owner for that particular area. Limerick Quayle is our new director of EL, and we've broadened that job description now to where she is the director of equity and English letters is, isn't the title. So Limerick comes to us from Glenbarre High School District, having done a lot of equity work, and having some, some good expertise in that space. And so she was excited to broaden her, her opportunities. So she, I think actually proved your tonight on the personnel corps, I'm not mistaken, into that role, and she can do a great job. And then second thing, I just, I wanted to mention the task force that we talked about with Dr. Kroom, which is the second item under that family and community engagement. There's a text that we're going to use as really the basis for beginning discussion with that group. The text is called subtly diverse as a case study. It's written from a case study perspective, really looking at a couple of school districts that have seen a significant transformation in the demographic of their district, and diversity in their district. And it really examines a lot of the leadership and governance practices that have to change and evolve as you, you think about leadership and governance in a, in a different way through an equity. So it's a really good text. So I, I, in the process of getting additional copies for that task force, we're pulling the, that group together with an intent to meet for the first time in, in early August. So I have a copy tonight, if somebody wants to take it and start reading it, you're welcome to. My, my intention was to purchase a copy of this, for each of the board members, understanding that that task force will be bringing back to you a report of their work and key findings based on the text. I think it'd be important for the, the board to really have the background of what it is that they're studying and evaluating. So my plan is to buy a, a copy so that you have it. But if somebody's really itching to get started, I'll have this up here.
I'd almost like to see, and you know, perform a, whether you're not, but how that, this statement that we're referring to has, is being dealt with in the reopening. And I mean, I, I think there, this is a vulnerable group, and, you know, as I read this, I'm thinking, you know, how are we doing this for that group as we reopen? Are we giving them this attention that's needed to support this policy saving of the business? And I think it blocks very much of the song. I think that could be the mission of that committee right off of that.
I think as we, you know, there's a lot of great questions coming up tonight. I think we're retired after two really meaty topics. And I think this would be great to bring back into discussion in August, which gives more validity to the idea of having a committee of the whole in July to focus on a reopening plan, that maybe free up some meeting space, that's the wrong term, free up room in our agenda for deeper focus on this particular topic, and give board members individually to, some opportunity to dig in and help with it. One, anybody else have a question? I have one specific comment on curriculum and programming. Anybody else have anything?
I just wanted to mention in first order of practices, that I talked to a friend a couple of weeks ago, and it just happened to come up, that she, she was a teacher for ten years in a district north of the city, a middle school teacher. And she mentioned that they used a peer mediation group that, if they're, you know, just wanted to throw that out. She said it was a really wonderful experience. They, they, we can get into the little details, but probably there may be two peer mediators, and then, you know, if a student got in trouble, they could choose to come report with peer mediators. And one of, she was just saying, one of the mediators was a girl who got in trouble, kind of in her earlier years. And she really fought to be one of the mediators, because she's like, I understand this. I understand what they're going through. And she said it was a really wonderful experience for her, but for the students as well, meaning to work together to figure out how it deals. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I thought it was an interesting, you know, idea and concept, that she said worked well in her middle school.
Okay, the one comment that I had, I'd like to propose that we add another line in our curriculum and programming. You know, back in December, we approved American High School History class. I would love to have this as part of our work plan to kind of measure participation, you know, how can we expand that in the future, once we're a year or so into that? Since, I mean, to Susan's point about being direct. I mean, we've already taken steps to be direct, and I think it's not in this plan yet, even though it's part of our plan. So I'd just like to propose that that's a good line I have to add, and so we don't distract ahead. Okay, any other questions on this? We'll read, I just would ask board members to take a deeper look at this. Dr. Schuler and I, and maybe I'll play in, get some feedback from everybody else individually on a committee and other steps we can take. All right, that's the end of our discussion items. We do have four written reports tonight, providing information only. Those are the monthly financial reports, the Freedom of Information Act report, the construction update from Jefferson Learning Center. We also have a board communication blog. I'm sure that's going to be really full the next meeting, for all the emails we've received. Any comments or questions about written communication or written reports? Any board committee reports, questions? Or any other reports from board members on other topics? Okay, topics for future discussion, we will have the budget, 2020-21 budget hearing in the August meeting. Going to just approve that, continue discussion of the 2021 school year, as we probably had in our lesson, the further discussion on the equity and proactive practices plan. Our next regular meeting schedule right now is August 12, 2020, something like back here in Marvel. We will discuss and evaluate whether it makes sense to have that, to do the whole on July 29. I think it sounds like you're agreeing.
Yeah.
It's would be a good idea. We do have a few public comments and non-agenda items that came into us by email, which we need to go through and read some of those. Many of them are on the same topic, related to what Dr. Schuler mentioned earlier about the building maintenance, our third-party building maintenance contractor. Want to go ahead?
Yep. So first, a couple of comments on agendas from Emily Oliver. And Emily from the American Heart Association, two-year schools partner with us this year to make an impact in the fighting of this heart disease. And I hope to be able to recognize that's what they're doing. And Brian, I'm thanking, recognizing, as well, Jen Racker and Emerson, and very nice, and Hugh and Jefferson, along with Principal Debbie Klein, and staff entirely through their support for the American Heart Association, through kids' heart channel programs at their schools. This program is designed to teach students in a memorable and fun way to stay heart healthy, not just physically, but mentally too. Both Terry and Jen do a tremendous job, and some of these habits from their students in this program. It's clear their passion about the health and wellness of students, and we love seeing this come to life each year at their schools. Not only do Terry and Jen teach students to be healthy, but they reiterate the importance of helping others, and offer an outlet for donations to the American Heart Association to go towards advancements in cardiovascular research, local hospitals to provide guidelines for the best care, advocacy efforts, and all. While donations are not required, it's paid in the program, these two schools still raise a total of $4,000 to fight our nation's leading cause of death, heart disease. We're inspired and we're grateful for both the work that Terry and Jen do, but also the support of the entire school communities, and Emerson and Jefferson. Now more than ever, education on staying heart healthy is so very important. Keep hearts strong with COVID present. Additionally, AHA has been helping to fund research on COVID and heart disease. We know that heart disease affects so many, and well, we know next year we'll look differently. Continue to support your schools with resource. Thank you, Mr. 200, for your support. We wish you the best this summer. And then the second comment I'm going to read, and I kind of will say, Brad verified that these are literally exactly the same. So I'm going to read one and just acknowledge the other means that issued the same statement. So these comments are coming from Ellen Joyce Tomas, Natalie Tomas, Roberta James, Tyler Mixanet, Betty Klein, and Lex Burmell. And the comments say, I'm writing to the district board on Friday today, to, I'm writing to you today regarding custodians in the community unit District 200, nearly 100 custodians represented by SEIU Local One are currently negotiating a new contract with their employer, American Building Management. Despite continuing to work on the front lines of the COVID-19 crisis, putting their own health at risk, custodians are being offered a mere 10 cent raise. They also do not receive paid sick days, making it more difficult to keep our schools and committees healthy. As a parent, to CUSD 200, we're here to order to ensure that custodians in our district can support their families with a fair raise, so we go to work where you will, along with paid sick time, and we need to keep our schools healthy. Custodians are essential workers, and they clean, and clean schools are more important than ever, as we evaluate plans for the potential reopening in the fall. Please do the right thing for our students and teachers by making sure that our custodians get a fairer contract. We rely on them to keep our schools safe and clean for this CUSD 200 community, and they should be able to care for their own families as well. So actually, not everybody who was a parent ever lied about being a parent, but was a former student, and a couple of employees. They care as well, but the rest of the text was, was the same.
Yeah, we did get one other email that requested a public comment. It's not a non-agenda, and it deals pretty specifically with an individual's student issue. So my direct recommendation is not to read it, but the district could reach out to her directly. That would be helpful.
Right.
Everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. And just a reminder for people who might still be online, all of the other emails we received are that we're not requesting to be read at all account, and the board has received all those. We'll have, will eventually, if we have them already, read those individual emails. So they're all being considered as feedback. Okay, there being no further action, coming forward in the board and open session. As for motion, in a second, to adjourn the meeting, can I have a motion?
Too much.
By Mrs. Craig, seconded by Mr. Hamlin. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Not one of us signed.
Oh, yeah, sure. Does Rob have to sign too?